Take your seats.
All right, folks. Welcome, everybody. Tonight's a very special night. We're going to remember September 11th. On September 11th, 2001, it'll be a day that will be forever remembered, both for its tragedy and for the unwavering spirit of the American people. As our nation was attacked by terrorists, yet heroes emerged among us. Among those who showed true courage and sacrifice were the New York Fire and Police Departments. Their response to the tragedy reminds us all of the importance of our safety personnel and their commitment to protecting us. As a tribute to these brave men and women, we are proud to introduce our community's Fire and Police Departments. Ladies and gentlemen, please stand. Honor guard. Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Councilmember Bill DeLaPeña.
Present.
Councilmember Engler.
Present.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Mayor Protem Adam.
Here.
Mayor McCoy.
Present. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we have two special presentations tonight, and I had a chance to meet these young fellows. Amazing group of players. For tonight's special presentation, I'm going to ask the Thousand Oaks Little League Ten and Under manager, Dwayne Burton, coaches Tyler Bacon, Rog Collins, to please join me up here for special recognition. Come on up. Let me finish what we're doing here. So you all clapped, you don't even know who they are. This summer, these 10-year-old boys went on an impressive undefeated 10-0 run to become the state of California Ten and Under champions. Now you can clap. The city is proud of your accomplishments, fellows, and we're pleased to be able to recognize you and your coaches tonight. Coach Burton, if you'd introduce the boys by name, we have a certificate for each of them, so let's do it. You want to say a few words? Come on.
Just real briefly, thank you. First off, I'd like to say thank you to Mayor McCoy, city council members, our Thousand Oaks Little League families, as well as all the Thousand Oaks residents and attendants tonight. When these 13 boys and three coaches started the Little League All-Star season this summer, we had one goal in mind, and that was to be state champions. They reached their goal. They did exactly what they set out to do. Hard work, perseverance. You know, over 300 hours of baseball took place this summer with these boys, and it paid off. Over 400 teams started the summer with one goal in mind, and these 13 young men right here achieved that goal. The camaraderie that this team showed for two months of baseball is like nothing I've ever seen before. I'm proud. I'm honored to be their manager. I know these gentlemen behind me are honored to be their coach, and we appreciate you guys having us here tonight to recognize these young men right here. So thank you for having us. We appreciate it.
All right, here we go. First up, Dane Bacon. Next up, Ryan Burton. Brady Collins. Nathan Currielli. Luke Jacobson. Michael Larkin. Harris Lee. Preston Lee. Michael Manley. Ian Park. Dylan Sax. Tyson Seidman. Jack Sweeney. Coach Tyler Bacon. And Coach Rog Collins. All right, while the boys are exiting quietly, I'd like to introduce Melissa Hurtado, the Assistant to the City Manager, who's going to tell us about the events that are being planned to celebrate the 25th anniversary of the Thousand Oaks Civic Arts Plaza. Melissa, where are you? There you are.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy, and thank you, council members. We are excited to invite city council staff, and most importantly, the public, to celebrate the 25th anniversary of the Civic Arts Plaza over two weekends in October. There will be several events to celebrate this milestone. So on October 4th, T.O. Arts, the fundraising and presenting arm of the Civic Arts Plaza, is hosting a gala entitled Curtain Up. You'll find food from the '70s through the present, a live auction, and a concert by Herb Albert and Laney Hall. And then after, there will be an after-party, including a surprise. Some special performances to mark the occasion include Jackie Yovanco on October 6th, Vanessa Williams on October 11th. And three resident companies, Five Star Theatricals, New West Symphony, and Pacific Ballet, will have a special show entitled Hollywood on Stage on October 12th. Tickets are available now at civicartsplaza.com. These events will all culminate with the Civic Arts Plaza 25th Anniversary Open House Celebration on Sunday, October 13th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. It's a free, family-friendly event, which will include live entertainment, a touch-a-truck display, junior firefighter agility course, tours of the theaters, children's activities, along with folks from the city departments to provide information on city programs and services. And one of the more important components of the open house celebration is the General Plan Update pop-up event. The community will have the opportunity to share their vision for Thousand Oaks. Bring the kids, have some fun, but be sure to stop by the booth to share your input. And for those of you not already doing so, be sure to follow T-Oaks 2045, so that's T-Oaks 2045, on both Facebook and Twitter. Thank you all for your time and attention, and we hope to see you there.
Thank you, Melissa. Madam Clerk, since there's no special, or we did the special presentation, will you please announce the public comments?
This is a time and place for public comments. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. Speakers for public hearing items shall be called and heard during the public hearing. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole, and all documents for city council and the official records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. Three individuals have presented cards, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you very much. Our first speaker tonight, it says Anna Katabjian, but isn't it Hannah? Hannah, come on up. Oh, it's Anna. Okay, Anna, come on up, and you gave us- it Hannah? Hannah, come on up. Oh, it's Anna. Okay, Anna, come on up, and you gave us a flyer, so I was thrilled in reading it, and I'm sure the community would love to hear about it.
Thank you. My name is Anna Katabjin. I'm from Newbury Park. I'm a pediatric nurse practitioner at Children's Hospital, Los Angeles. I want to thank you on the council for letting me speak, and for Mr. Engler for inviting me to come and speak to you all. I know everyone here today has at some point in their life been face-to-face with some type of trauma or emergency situation. As pastors, businessmen, fire chiefs, teachers, journalists, and veterans of our military, you experienced this firsthand in your jobs, and then encountered two back-to-back events last year that shook our community to its core. I'm here today to tell you about Saturday of Safety, which is a free event that Grace Bible Church of Newbury Park has hosted for the past two years, this being its third year. This event was created by Grace Bible Church after the events in Las Vegas, in an effort to empower their community to be first responders in the event of traumatic events, both accidental and non-accidental. The educational topics being taught at this year include the Stop the Bleed Program, which was created by the American College of Surgeons, how to give adult and infant CPR, how to rescue an adult and infant from choking, how to use an automatic external device, defibrillator, how to rescue from drowning, how to recognize signs and symptoms of a heart attack and stroke, how to use an EpiPen, and disaster preparedness. The Ventura County Fire Department is also expected to attend to teach on fire safety, barring we don't have any wildfires. Why is this important? I'm so glad you asked.
Why is this important?
Every 40 seconds, someone in the U.S. has a heart attack. Every 40 seconds, someone has a stroke. Only 25% of those surveyed know all major symptoms of a heart attack and when to call 911. Drowning is the number-one cause of death in children 1 to 4 years in age, and unfortunately, in pediatrics, I've seen this way too much in my lifetime. 40% of children with a food allergy have experienced a severe allergic reaction such as anaphylaxis. Epinephrine is the only effective treatment and must be injected within minutes of onset of symptoms. A quarter of the EpiPen injections at schools involve individuals with an unknown food allergy. 60% of Americans are not practicing for a disaster, and 41% are not prepared at all. Trauma is the leading cause of death in individuals under the age of 45. About 5 million people every year die from accidental and non-accidental trauma. As many as 80% of domestic shooting victims could have been saved with fast-trauma response. 56% of choking victims are over the age of 74 years. This is why it's important. A person can bleed to death in five to eight minutes. It takes, on average, emergency medical service members at least seven minutes to arrive, and in rural areas, it takes about 10 minutes. In active shooter events, it can take more than 30 minutes for EMS, police, or fire to come and aid those who are wounded because they have to make sure the situation is safe first. Now, I want to emphasize that this event is to prepare individuals to respond to both acts of terror, as well as just normal, everyday accidents and allergic reactions. Accidents happen, anaphylactic allergies are on the rise, and we experienced both major fires and strong earthquakes within the last year. Knowledge is power. We want to empower our community to be safer by teaching others how to be first responders. We want to take away the shock factor of these events so that people can just tap into the knowledge that they've received and respond appropriately to keep their loved ones and those around them alive. I'm sorry, am I out of time?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. You did great. And thank you for this, and folks participate. Thank you, Anna.
Thank you.
All right, well done. Following Anna will be Sam Wagner. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Sam H. Wagner. I'm a partner in Told Partners. I'm a commercial real estate broker, and I've spoken in front of the council many times over the 37 years that I've worked in the Cano Valley. Our name, Told, is, used to stand for Thousand Oaks Land and Development. Consequently, we started doing business all over the country, and we shortened it to Told. I'm speaking here tonight on behalf of one of our tenants, a client called Ventura Seed Company. We entered into a lease agreement with Ventura Seed several weeks ago, and after much due diligence and research, we became educated as to what Ventura Seed does. And they're involved in the processing of industrial or commercial hemp. They don't have anything to do with THC. And the particular property owner that I represent, USA Cano LLC, who owns this 35,000-square-foot industrial building, asked me to come tonight with Ventura Seed to discuss the occupancy. And apparently, when Ventura Seed was going through the entitlement process or permits to do the construction, that they got to the city attorney's office, and the city attorney had some reservations about their occupancy. And so that brought me here tonight. Tonight, you'll also be hearing from the farm manager at Ventura Seed, the operations manager of Ventura Seed, and also legal counsel of Ventura Seed, so that we can establish the legality of what they're doing or what they propose to do at 1415 Lawrence Drive. I don't know if the council is aware of the differences between industrial hemp and marijuana, but industrial hemp has to be pretty close to 99% pure and not contain more than .03% of THC, which is the intoxicant. So as of 2018, the processing of industrial hemp in California was legalized. That documentation, and also the operational statement for Ventura Seed, was presented to staff earlier this evening, and we've been working with one of the staff members, on the planning staff, I think Mr. Hayter. So we're hoping that, after consideration tonight, that the city council, the city attorney, and the planning department can mediate any differences the city attorney may have, and we can come to a resolution. I'm hopeful that the city of Thousand Oaks can be part of the solution that CBD oils represent in terms of replacing prescription medications. And after I speak tonight, you'll be hearing from other people at Ventura Seed, but that concludes my comments.
Thank you, sir. Now we have Adam Haverstock. Good to see you again.
Good to see you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Adam Haverstock, I am the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism at the Greater Cano Valley Chamber of Commerce, with a couple updates for you this evening. First and foremost, a big thank you to Mayor McCoy. We had our Board of Directors meeting this afternoon, and he very graciously took some time out of his calendar to come and speak to our board, so thank you for doing that. I know the board really appreciated it. First, I wanted to let you guys know about an event coming up. Hopefully, you've heard about it already, the Taste of Cano. It is our largest fundraiser at the Chamber of Commerce. It also happens to be a big food and wine festival that's going to happen on Friday, October 11, at the Four Seasons Hotel in Westlake Village. It's going to be from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. That's 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. general admission, and then 6:00 to 7:00 is a VIP hour for people that buy VIP tickets. It's going to be over 120 food and beverage sampling booths at that event, and tickets are for sale at tastefcaneo.com. So hopefully, we will see you all there, and hopefully, the public would like to come and attend as well. The Chamber of Commerce is offering a new service in partnership with California Chamber. I've mentioned it here before, but it may be new to some of the members of the public. There is a requirement that full-time employees receive one hour of workplace harassment training every two years, and that supervisors get two hours of workplace harassment training every two years. The state of California did push back the deadline to have that training completed to January 1 of 2021. I used to say here that it was 2020. That's been pushed back a year, but it is still going to be required. California Chamber of Commerce has created an online service with all of the required information for that training. They have given it to us at Greater Cano Valley Chamber of Commerce, and we're offering it to the public. So you do not need to be a member of the chamber to access that service. There is a discount for chamber members, but anyone can come to the chamber and pay for that service to get their employees trained. And then finally, on the tourism side, I wanted to give you an update about a new campaign we're doing. We're calling it our hashtag campaign. The goal of it is to get additional social media buzz and interest for Visit Cano Valley. And so we figured there's no better way to do that than just give people free stuff. So here's what we're doing. We actually made a bunch of cool things. This is a window cling. I don't know if they'll show it on the projector. I've also got coasters for restaurants and bars, and also table tents for restaurants that all say, hey, if you go and you tag Visit Cano Valley with a social media post on Instagram or Facebook, and you use the hashtag #CCanoValley, you're going to be entered in a contest, and once a month, you can win a gift card. We just gave a winner a gift card to Tarantula Hill Brewing Company. So if you like to win free stuff, and you like to post on social media, which I think is everyone in the world, then please participate in that campaign. Anna, unless there are any questions, that does conclude my comments this evening.
Thanks, Adam. That concludes our public comments. Now to the consent calendar. What's that? You want to follow up? All right.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. Just a couple of quick items of follow-up. We'll certainly do our best to help promote the Saturday of Safety event. I always appreciate Adam's reports, and as it relates to the item on industrial hemp and manufacturing, the speaker mentioned that will be a subject of Agenda Item 9A, and that's actually part of the presentation that will be discussed at that point in time. Wanted to make one additional note that we do have our, and Ms. Hurtado mentioned it upfront, but we do have our next Thousand Oaks General Plan 2045 Visioning Session coming up this Thursday. It's going to be at the Las Robles Greens Golf Course in the Sunset Room. Starts at 6 o'clock, goes till 8:30. It's our first big community workshop. Just want to encourage everyone to spread the word on that and come out and join us. It's going to be a very interactive discussion and a great chance to kick off our general plan efforts to help shape the vision for our community's future.
All right. That brings us to the consent calendar. Questions or motion? Councilmember Bill de la Peña.
If there are no items to be polled, then I would like to move the consent calendar.
Madam Clerk, will you put together the vote, please?
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. That brings us to Item 8A, Public Hearing Municipal Code Amendment Update for City Regulations for Biotech and Similar Uses in M1. And tonight, we have Don Nielsen, Associate Planner, heading it up, so take it over.
May I go ahead and open the hearing. Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A regarding Municipal Code Amendment to Update City Regulations for Biotechnology and Similar Uses in M1 Industrial Park Zone, MCA 2019-70572. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing, and at this time, we do not have any public speakers.
Thank you. Don?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to update the municipal code definitions, the use categories, and the permitting requirements in order to better reflect the evolving biotechnology sector. Biotechnology has really been around predominantly over the past 50 years, but has evolved rapidly within the past 10 to 20 years itself. And biotechnology businesses, they actually tend to locate in particular areas. Southern California is one of those major agglomerations of biotechnology uses. We actually have what's called Biotechnology Beach here. It spans from San Diego all the way up to Thousand Oaks. Thousand Oaks is looking to try and capture that, and it's actually been codified inside of the policies. That has then manifested into the background for this municipal code amendment. The city council actually initiated the amendment back in July, directing staff to research biotechnology sectors and how the code can actually be updated in order to better address the needs of that particular business sector. The Planning Commission then reviewed the recommendations back in August, and they actually made a recommendation for approval of the municipal code amendment, as is to the city council. Taking a look at all of that, staff then prepared its proposed definitions. The current code actually does not contain any adequate definition for the biotechnology sector, so staff was actually able to research other jurisdictions and created this particular definition. As contained within here, it's actually focusing more on the technical research and design development and testing of technological and biological components. The main purpose of this is really to focus on that advanced technology aspect of biotechnology, and that's because they utilize different technologies that you'd have in the normal industrial research and development process. Now, all of that biotechnology, the uses, they tend to be less intensive than you would find in your traditional industrial research and development, industrial processes. They have less of the nuisances, so less odors and noise. And they reflect more of what would be classified as a light industrial use. So where in the city would that actually be located? Staff then identified it's what's called the M1 Zone, the industrial park zone. And that zone, by its own definition, is geared more for this light industrial use. And the M1 Zone is actually located in two primary areas of the city. They're actually along the east and west sides of the city, bookending the 101 corridor. The largest concentration is actually the Rancho Cano area. There's approximately 1,200 acres of M1 zoning located within that one area itself. Now, now that we have identified the actual locations of where the biotechnology uses can go, we then have to address how the biotechnology sector can locate within that particular zone. Under the current regulations, biotechnology would be classified under the research and development use category. It's an older use. It doesn't exactly address the needs, the current needs of biotechnology. And so if that particular use wants to locate within 400 feet of an existing residential use, it will trigger what's called a special use permit. And so it's a lengthy process. Outside of that, it's a development permit. However, given the nature of, the less-intensive nature of this particular sector, staff is proposing that it just be allowed to go into all of the M1 zones through the development permit process. And that is really recognizing, as I've mentioned before, that this particular use, it's, has less of those nuisances that you would have with the industrial processes. So less noise, less odors, less particulate distribution. And that's also mainly because right now, with the current code, it lumps biotechnology together with garment and textile manufacturing, tire rebranding, and tire manufacturing. So it's these other more intensive, heavier uses that biotechnology doesn't actually gel with. Associated with all of those permitting procedures, staff also looked at the parking requirements for biotech use. They do tend to be a little bit less intensive. And in order to get a better understanding, staff did research. It was seven other jurisdictions primarily located within Ventura County. However, we also did identify South San Francisco and San Jose. Now, taking a look at all of their particular parking requirements, we did notice that the range of parking resulted from half a space up to 3.33 spaces per thousand square feet. And then focusing down onto Ventura County, it was, we're hitting about that two spaces per thousand square feet. Therefore, staff is taking that into consideration and proposing that it's one space per 500 square feet of net floor area. And then, under the current regulations, by right, or I'm sorry, under proposed regulations, they would allow 20% of their gross building area, so the entire building, 20% of that could actually become, be office space without triggering a different type of parking requirement. However, as soon as we get over that 20%, we then, the use of the building actually changes from a biotechnology use, that industrial use, into something more of a truly office, which will have more of a higher demand. And so that's when it would require one to 300, one space per 300 square feet of the building area to really address that a little bit of a change. To show how this would actually affect, could potentially impact real-life scenarios, we did look at the Atara Building, which is an existing biotech company out in the Cano area. And currently, their office area only comprises approximately 13% of the floor area. Staff then also looked at several of the large industrial buildings that are proposed for the Cano areas, the Rancho Cano area as well, and those averaged about only 9% of the building floor area would have been purely for office space use. The rest of it was going to be for the industrial and back-of-house operations. So this 20% is still being, is very generous in that matter. And just to kind of give you a real-life or a fictitious example with some kind of harder numbers, say we take 100,000-square-foot building, approximately 83,000 square feet of net industrial area, so all the laboratories, storage, warehousing areas, that's of net industrial area, so all the laboratories, storage, warehousing areas, that's included in there. And then you have about 72,000 square feet of the net office area with, say, 300 employees. Under the existing regulations, that would require that particular business to provide 216 parking spaces. However, under the proposed regulations, it only require 180 parking spaces. This is a significant reduction in required parking that can actually really help to draw in these potential businesses into the city in order to help diversify the job requirements. So how does all of this, these amendments actually, how are they consistent with the city policies? Well, the municipal code amendment, it actually helps to encourage these lighter industrial uses and this high-tech and science-based businesses to locate within the city, which is consistent with the general plan. Furthermore, it is consistent with the citywide priority, which the city council had set earlier this year, because this municipal, this code amendment specifically focuses on that growing biotechnology sector, which we can see it's actually growing across the entire state as well as across the entire country. And then, this code amendment also is consistent with the city council's goals for the city by focusing on the higher technology biomedical jobs in order to create a stronger and more diverse local employment base for the city. Now, the entire amendment, it actually is exempt from the provisions of SEQA using the common sense exemption as we're moving, as proposed. Therefore, staff is recommending that the city council first find that the municipal code amendment is exempt from the provisions of SEQA, and two, to adopt the draft ordinance as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions from the council? We'll begin with Councilmember Bill de La Peña.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. Good evening, Mr. Nielsen, is it?
Yes.
And this is your first time before us, or no?
This is the first time before you guys, yes.
Well, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your very thorough presentation. I was wondering if you could help me understand the parking requirements a little better? So if, say, a company has 300 employees and the proposed parking spaces are 180, which as you say is a 17% reduction, will we encounter any parking issues?
So we haven't, as currently proposed, even under the current regulations, there is no issue. But then even looking at the other jurisdictions, there haven't been any issues with that because there's alternate modes of transportation to get there, rideshare programs, carpooling in order to get to these particular locations. And so it's not foreseen that there would be any impact in terms of parking at these particular locations for that. And it's really just coming down to how the people are actually getting to work itself. And so we, one of the aspects is also looking at how they can diversify the transportation methods to those particular locations.
Are there any opportunities for share parking, shared parking?
There are opportunities for that. They actually do exist out, particularly in the Rancho Canaho industrial area. There are opportunities, locations that have, you have the industry, it's effectively condoized industrial buildings, and they have, it's communal parking that surrounds it. So it already exists out in that particular area. And there are multiple opportunities in the future for this shared parking to occur.
What about in the Westlake area?
Westlake area, there are, there are other smaller instances of shared parking within the Westlake area. A majority of the existing structures out there, they actually, they are compliant with today's standards, which are far and above beyond the requirements for the biotechnology sector. So there's still, there's a lot of playroom in terms of parking numbers if a biotech company were to locate within the Westlake industrial area.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. Mayor Protem, Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I think it's very healthy to go back and look at some of our ordinances from the past and modernize them, and this is a perfect example of that. This original ordinance was designed to keep heavy manufacturing away from residents, tire manufacturing, engine testing, garment manufacturing. Obviously, that's not what biotech companies do these days. So this will enable a biotech company to come into our area without having to get a special use permit and operate in the M1 zone, and do things a little more exciting than tire manufacturing, do things like artificial intelligence and robotics and genetics testing, some of the things that are very important to mankind and very important to this community. We're trying to build a biotech sector, and this is going to help that happen. Relaxing the parking standards helps a little as well, matches them up to what the real parking needs are. And I'm very happy that we created a new category called Technology and Life Sciences. Makes a lot more sense than the category we had before, garment manufacturing. We don't see a lot of that here in Thousand Oaks. So I would like to move A to A. It's a very wise and necessary update to the municipal code.
We will hold off on that motion. We have Councilmember Jones who wants to ask a question?
Yes. I was intrigued by the title, Common Sense, what is it, Exemption? I'm sure the public is heartened to know that we use common sense. And would you please explain what the common sense exempt? That doesn't mean we're exempt from common sense.
No, that, it doesn't. So as contained within the California Environmental Quality Act, there's Section 15061. It is colloquially known as the Common Sense Exemption, and it's really meant to apply to projects that have no foreseeable significant impact on the environment. In this particular instance, since we're just modifying existing city regulations to better match up to today's requirements, and we're going through that clarification, there's no actual physical development with it. The project, the municipal code amendment is able to fall under this common sense exemption. It doesn't mean that any new project, so if there's going to be a new development going into particular areas, a new ground up, that, those particular projects will have their own environmental review under that. But for this amendment itself, it just falls under this.
So in this case, using the common sense exemption, what is one item that this applies to in this particular application? Is it the parking?
Yeah, so the exemption applies to the entire amendment itself, because we are just modifying, since we are modifying all the existing, and the parking really is matching up with other parking standards that the city already has in the code. So it's really just kind of clarifying all existing standards so that it applies only to this one particular use type.
I see. So it is an overall?
Yes.
Application of common sense to the whole matter of exemptions and reduction in parking, et cetera, et cetera?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Engler?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Quick question on, and I'm with Councilmember Adams, I'm full supporter of doing what we can do to encourage our conversion to this type of technology. And I have one question, though. The assumption is that this type will be a low-impact-type industry in an area that sometimes gets very close to some housing. Do we have any way of addressing those times when perhaps any process extends past the boundary of the property that then affects the residential?
So just to kind of, just to clarify your question, it's if a proposed business is going into a particular location?
I'm thinking more of some, maybe some sounds or odors or something that goes beyond the property line that may affect the residential areas nearby.
Okay. As for that, it is, it falls under the code compliance. So the city, we have, so say it's a noise, we have this noise ordinance that would then be applied to that particular business in order to mitigate any noise issues for adjacent properties. Same thing with if any odors or particulate matter is generated, the city already has ordinances and regulations that are set in order to address all of those. And as a project is going through the plant check, so if they're going, locating inside of an existing structure, they have to go through, it's the plant check process. And during that, you're now also going to have, the fire department's going to be reviewing it for their issues, environmental health, building and safety. So they're going to be looking at multiple different aspects of an existing structure. But ultimately, it does come down to our code compliance.
Thank you.
Mr. Nielsen, good job. We have a motion. Madam Clerk, will you put together the vote, please?
The motion carries 5-0, and I have an ordinance title to read. An ordinance amending Thousand Oaks Municipal Code to add or modify Sections 9-4.202, 9-4.1601, 9-4.2105, and 9-4.2402 to define biotechnology and similar uses as technology and life sciences, add technology and life sciences to list of uses allowed in industrial park M1 zone, and establish parking standards for technology and life science uses, MCA 2019-70572.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And if you would announce the next public hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8B regarding Community Development Block Grant Program, program year 2018-19 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. And Mayor, at this time, we do not have any public speakers.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Lynn O'Shea, Community Development Analyst, welcome, take over.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This is the annual review of the city's Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, program from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The program year was July 1st, 2018, to June 30th, 2019. Staff is requesting city council approval to submit the KAPER performance report to Last year, there was a little over $1 million available. This included prior-year funding and the CDBG grant. The CDBG funds were allocated to three areas, including the 2017 and 2018 community projects, public services, and administration. The city expended approximately $461,000 in CDBG funds with an ending balance of a little more than $548,000. The city's primary CDBG activity last year was housing rehabilitation. CDBG funds benefited the 27 units at Richmond Terrace, of which 13 units were reserved for homelessness and disabled residents. The project replaced the wood shingles and installed security cameras. Mobile home rehabilitation activities with Safe and Habitat for Humanity rehabilitated 22 owner-occupied units for extremely low and very low residents, which included replacements of roofs, windows, and painting. CDBG expanded $87,000, and more than 6,000 low-income Thousand Oaks residents were served by six local nonprofit service providers. Administrative cost of $84,000 was less than prior year's budget. Cost savings of $31,000 will be made available for council reallocation in the next 2020 action plan. This summary shows the city's expended just over $460,000 in program year 2018-19 CDBG funds. A balance of approximately $548,000 will be carried forward to program year 2019, which started on July 1st. Staff is recommending that city council approve program year 2018 KAPER report for submission to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This concludes the slide presentation, and staff is available to respond to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. It doesn't appear there's any questions. Whoop. I spoke too soon. Councilmember Bill de La Peña?
I requested a motion if there are no public speakers.
There are no public speakers, and it appears as though that will work.
Wonderful. Then, thank you very much for the presentation, and I will move to approve staff recommendation.
That closes our hearing. Madam Clerk, will you please prepare the vote?
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now, Item 8C, if you would announce yet another public hearing.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8C regarding appeal of planning commission decision denying proposed service station and convenience store, SUP 2019-70299. A speaker card is available for those wishing to address the city council regarding this public hearing. All documents for city council and the official city records should be presented to the city clerk prior to speaking. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Eight individuals have presented speaker cards. In pursuit to council standards, each speaker will have four minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us to Stephen Kearns, Planning Division Manager. Take over.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor McCoy, members of the city council. As mentioned, the item before you this evening is an appeal of a planning commission decision that denied a proposed convenience store and service station at 2198 North Moore Park The applicant has requested that the city council consider the item and overturn the planning commission's decision to deny the project, thereby approving the request. This vicinity of the proposed site is located at the southeast corner of Avenue de S Flores and Moore Park Road. It's an aerial perspective of the site. As you can see, it is vacant. It is bound in red on the aerial. To the west is Moore Park Road. Cuyahoga Jasmine is immediately to the east, and Avenue de S Flores is to the north. There is residential to the east across Cuyahoga Jasmine, to the northeast across the intersection of Cuyahoga Jasmine and Avenue de S Flores, as well as across Moore Park Road to the west. Immediately adjacent to the south is a medical office building, and across Avenue de S Flores to the north is a neighborhood shopping center. And across the intersection of Avenue de S Flores and Moore Park Road is Thousand Oaks High School, shown this area. Shown here is the vantage looking through the subject site from across Moore Park Road toward the east. Again, the subject site looking southeast across the intersection of Avenue de S Arbores and Moore Park Road. As shown in the south part of the image is the medical office building, and across further to the east are residential homes in the backdrop. This is looking from the site to the north. This is the neighborhood shopping center across Avenue de S Flores. And again, from the site looking northwest across the intersection of Moore Park and Flores, and the backdrop is Thousand Oaks High School. As shown here is the site plan of the proposed project. The convenience store is located in the southeast corner of the site. It's about 2,500 square feet. Around the perimeter and adjacent to Cuyahoga Jasmine is a 10-foot landscape strip, as well as a privacy wall located. It's a continuation of the east wall of the building and continues down the side property line. There are parking spaces throughout the site, as well as three pump islands, shown in these areas, and an overhead canopy above the pump islands. There are two driveway accesses, one off Moore Park Road. This one is shared with the medical office building to the south. And a second is on Avenue de S Flores. There is also perimeter landscaping along Moore Park Road, Avenue de S Flores, and again on the Cuyahoga Jasmine frontage. Shown here are the elevations of the structures. The top elevation is a proposed trellis above the fuel pumps. It's about 17 feet tall. The service station itself is about 29 feet to the highest element, with the balance of the building being at 19 feet. On the east elevation, facing Cuyahoga Jasmine, the residential area, the applicant has requested... On the east elevation facing Kaia Jasmine, the residential area, the applicant is proposing to incorporate stone veneer, as well as on the front elevation facing northwest towards the high school, there'll be stone veneer, couple of trellises with landscaping, and large storefront windows. This is a rendering of what the proposed station will look like. It's a vantage point from the intersection of Moore Park and Flores, looking southeast. In the foreground, you see the landscape planters, the fuel pump areas, the trellis above the fuel pumps, the convenience store in the backdrop with the large storefront windows and the stone veneer, the privacy wall on the east property line area, and then again the additional landscaping and driveway off of Avenue de S Flores. This is another perspective looking through the site, through the southwest. Again, the site improvements, the privacy wall along Kaia Jasmine, along with the landscape planner, and the service station building. What's not shown in this image are proposed trees along the planter on Kaia Jasmine, which the next image incorporates. And this is the applicant's proposal, once all landscaping is installed from this perspective. As a matter of background, a special use permit is required for service stations in the commercial shopping center zone, which this site is zoned. And for all service station requests, either new or remodeled service stations, the City Council Resolution Regarding Service Station applies, and the City Council Resolution 1972-337 was applied to this request. On April 1st of this year, the planning commission considered a first proposal for this site by the applicant, and at that meeting, considered to deny the request, and in doing so, denied it without prejudice, which gave the applicant the ability to apply for the same or similar project within six months. A week later, the applicant submitted a new application, which is before you this evening. The planning commission considered that request on July 8th, and ultimately denied that request, and which time the applicant had 10 days to file appeal, and did so on July 18th. The key differences between the first project and the project before you this evening are shown here in this table. The first iteration included 24-hour operation on a daily basis. This proposal is 21 hours from 5:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. on a daily basis. First proposal did not include tobacco, vapor, alcohol. This proposal does not include vapor alcohol. At the time when the project was submitted, the lot size was, the plan demonstrated a lot size less than 20,000 square feet, which is the minimum required for service stations. Subsequently, the applicant and engineer surveyed the lot and determined it was 20,000 square feet, so this is not a waiver. And public outreach conducted by the applicant in the first application was sent to 300, people, property owners within 300 feet, and in this recent application, they extended that to 500 feet. The key purpose of a special use permit is to determine whether or not a proposed use is appropriate for its surrounding area. The key difference between a special use permit and a development permit is the development permit identifies uses that are allowed in a certain zone where a special use permit is not allowed as a matter of right. And the key issue in evaluating a project under the special use permit process is to determine that the proposal is compatible and appropriate for the neighborhood that's around it. So shown here, I'm not going to go through them all, but these are the five findings the code prescribes for making, for approving a special use permit. The first four are applicable to any permit, a development permit or a special use permit, the fifth being the key criteria and finding that must be made to approve a special use permit, and this case was key in the decision by the planning commission that the proposed use at its proposed location will be compatible with land uses in the vicinity. Now, the next few slides are the planning commission's findings for denial. I'll go over, go over the general content of them. The first was that a setback deviation near the residential side of the property is not appropriate, and the second part of that finding was that the 21-hour use is inconsistent with the service station criteria, as well as the surrounding area. The planning commission determined that the proposed project and its operation was detrimental to health, safety, and general welfare because of the 21-hour operation and its proximity to residential, being only 60 feet, and that the operation itself will create noise and light that is not typical for this area. And that the proposed convenience store, with its close proximity to the high school, will attract students to the site. This creates conflict between pedestrians and vehicles, since this is an auto-centric use. And this brings me to, the property across Moore Park Road to the north, the shopping center I identified earlier, was originally a drive-through dairy back in the '60s, and it had a history of students congregating on the site and creating trash and nuisance to customers, as well as to the neighborhood adjacent to it. So in 1985, the dairy use had discontinued its operation, and the property owner at the time saw that zone change, to change the property zoning to its current designation of C2. In doing so, council adopted use restrictions on the property intended to prevent students from congregating and eliminate that problem, and the uses that are allowed at that shopping center are low-intensity uses. A convenience store would not be allowed at that location. And in 1987, the structure, the building itself, was approved, and those uses, the use restrictions approved by the zone change were adopted by the development permit. The applicant's appeal has essentially two grounds, and I will read those. The planning commission's sensible grounds for denying the SUP were not supported by substantial evidence, and this contains five subsections. The second grounds for appeal is that the staff report demonstrated prejudice and bias against the project, imposing conditions and conclusions in direct conflict with binding code prescribed in the 1967 Service Station Criteria Regulations, impairing the applicant's due process rights, and this also includes five subsections. This appeal was submitted in a unique format, as you may have noted by, in the staff report. The grounds for appeal were not specific to the findings made for denial by the planning commission. Instead, the grounds for appeal focus on planning commission deliberation during the public hearing process, as well as staff suggested conditions contained in the attached staff, is attached to the staff report, should the planning commission elect to approve the project, which they did not. Just for clarification, the appeal references the 1967 guidelines, which were the initial guidelines adopted, and there were subsequent, three subsequent amendments to that, and the applicable being the 1972 guidelines. In response to the appeal comments, for more detailed response, please refer to the staff report. It's a little bit lengthy, but the comments made during the public hearing at the planning commission do not constitute findings. This is discussion in evaluating the project, and were not necessarily the findings made to deny the project. The specific finding with regard to the setback was in regard to the setback reduction being taken from the residential side. There's the residential side and two commercial portions of the property, and that was specific to the residential setback waiver. The proposed 21-hour operation was found to not be consistent with the guidelines, which has limited hours for projects within 200 feet of a residential area, and that the roofing materials discussed in the applicant's appeal, they were not a finding for denial. They were a recommendation by staff, and that was if the project was approved, and again, staff's recommendation was not for approval, and the planning commission did not approve it. The second appeal grounds, the applicant makes many references to the previous project that was deliberated and denied at the April 1st planning commission meeting, which is not part of this appeal. The findings for denial are specific to the proposed hours of operation from the applicant, not conditions of approval. So that's the 5:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. hours of operation. Staff acknowledges the guidelines do acknowledge uniqueness of service station, but these guidelines are intended to ensure compatibility of uses in the area with the proposed use. And staff does acknowledge that the guidelines allow for the sale of soft drinks, candy, and cigarettes, and staff is not recommending or did not recommend a condition against any of these items, or prohibiting them. So to sum up, staff's primary concern is that the proposed use is not compatible with the area. We have sensitive uses across the street, the residential area immediately to the east and northeast, as well as the proximity to the high school, and concerns with the conflicts created by the pedestrians and the cars. Therefore, staff is recommending that the City Council uphold the planning commission's decision to deny the project, and this concludes staff's presentation. There was two supplemental packets with correspondence submitted to the City Council last week and another one this afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Questions from the council? We'll begin with Councilmember Jones.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted a general question. Here we have a denial, we had two denials, and now we have an appeal, and we just heard the grounds for the denials and the other aspects of the plan. Are our remarks limited to the reasons that were given in the denial and the appeal? In other words, could we ask other questions about the project, other than those strictly relative to the appeal?
So, the appeal that's before you is only for the second project. The applicant did not appeal the first project. So, what is before you tonight is the project as proposed by the applicant, but with respect to what questions the council can ask, and what areas the council can convey, support, concerns, whatever, it's wide open. You can ask questions on all aspects of the project.
So we're not limited to?
You're not limited. You are limited to what is being proposed by the applicant.
Anything having to do with that installation at that location is fair game, is that?
It's all fair game, but questions regarding the prior application are not appropriate, since that's not the basis for the appeal.
Got it, thank you.
Did you have a question, Councilman Jones?
No, no other questions, Your Honor.
I have a question, if there's no other council members. My question is, is there any other operating business that operates on a 21-hour schedule anywhere remotely close to this community, this neighborhood?
The only facility close to this neighborhood that I'm aware of is the USA Gas Station in the corner of Jan's and Moore Park. That's a 24-hour operation. It's about half a mile or so to the south.
Okay. All right. Well, there's no further questions from the council, so it's, we have speakers, it will be, the applicant will speak 15 minutes, and so you're up, welcome. Hello, Mr. Scrivener.
Actually, I'm the architect, and my address is 4765 Via Don Luis, Thousand Oaks. The applicant is also here tonight, should you have questions.
Thank you.
I thought the property owner was going to be here, but he didn't make it. The property owners operated this site as a gas station and a repair shop for 40 years, and the property owners, residential property owners nearby, actually lived there when it was a gas station. 14 years ago, the property owners demolished the gas station and cleaned up the site to meet the environmental concerns. They want to build back now a gas station minus the noisy repair shop, so that will dramatically improve the situation from what it was before for the neighbors. This project will share an existing driveway with a two-story medical building and parking lot, and that project is located next door to a residential area, two-story medical and parking lot directly next, and that was approved not too many years ago by the commission. This site is zone C1 and requires a 100-foot setback from all three streets, leaving five feet for a building. So, under rezone, there was no way to build a building. A variance is obviously required to build any project on this site. The staff told us in the beginning, when we first started, that there were many undersized lots in the city, and they have been developed with a variance, and they would support one on this project. We were told that. I have a letter from the staff asking us to set the building back 50 feet from Moore Park Road. And yet, you just heard the staff say they don't want a reduction towards the residential. Well, you can't have it both ways. It's been a problem here. We asked the staff where they would like the building, because where we have it is where they ask us to put it. We didn't know, they didn't like the building location until three days before the planning commission hearing, at which time they recommended denial because we asked for a variance. How do you build without a variance? I don't understand it. Our building is only 2,500 square feet, the size of a small house, which means it's scaled to fit the community, the neighborhood. The two-story medical building certainly doesn't fit the scale of the neighborhood, and yet it was approved. We also have a pitched roof to match the residential nearby, nearby and the medical. Condition number 17, I believe it is, requires my client to match the building roof next door. I'm sure you know what the design guidelines are. The design guide notes that if you follow the design guidelines, you are compatible with Thousand Oaks architecture. That's the whole point of the design guidelines. Page 16 of the design guidelines note, roofing materials need not be the same as adjacent structures. Roofing materials need not be the same as adjacent structures. That means we do not have to match what's on the building next door. My client and I picked a material and color recommended by the design guidelines. We followed the design guidelines to pick a color and a material. Since my client is not required to match the adjacent roofs, per the design guidelines, we request you eliminate condition number 17. That actually requests we violate the design guidelines. Sound is another reason staff has recommended denial of this project. My sound engineer told me four lanes of Moore Park traffic will be considerably noisier than this site, especially since we do not have a repair shop as part of the project. My client is spending a lot of money to construct a six-foot-high stone-covered wall to control sound and give privacy to the residences behind the property. He is also planting a row of trees at the rear of the property to totally shield this project from the neighbors. The canopy over the pumps will look like a wood trellis. If you notice in the rendering, you may have noticed that. We're replacing six large pots at the base of each column, and each pot will contain vines that will grow over the canopy, over the pumps, and be filled with colorful flowers. We also, lighting will be designed to totally be within the site. It will be low-level lighting, it will be pointed where the activity is, where it needs to be. There will be no light influence on the neighbors, as the staff suggested. Summing up, I don't think the city should be denying an applicant because he has to have a variance due to carelessness. have a variance due to careless zoning. And I say careless because he zoned, obviously tiny site with C1 zoning, which is normally for big projects, because they require 100-foot setback. It made no sense, and yet we're stuck with it. I don't believe you should approve a condition that requests the applicant not adhere to the design guidelines. And I'm referring to the roof element. We are following the design guidelines. The staff is not. Sound is not a reason to deny a gas station without a noisy repair shop next to a very noisy street. My client should be approved because he will agree to operating hours of 6 to 11. He wants to include the store as part of that because that's where the cashier is. That's where the business is done. That's how it works. My client has agreed to not sell alcohol and vaping products. My client has a letter from the TO High School principal, Bergman, and I think this is in your packet, noting he looks forward to working with my client to make a 7-Eleven, the 7-Eleven, a really nice amenity to the campus. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be willing to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scribner. Probably at the end, when we finish with the remaining of the public speakers, we'll have questions for you just before your rebuttal.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Scribner, thank you for stating your place of address and residence. And I would ask that of the public speakers, if you would. It would help us because this is a community concern. And so with that, our first public speaker, you have four minutes since we have nine of you. John McLaughlin, if you're here, you're up. And then following Good evening, sir. Thank you for coming.
Good evening. My name's John McLaughlin, and I live at 653 Cuyahoga with my daughter, Emily. Is it possible to put the site plan back up on the screen, please? Thank you. I oppose this proposal on various grounds, and one of them is the fact that the entry and exit to this property is adjacent to a bus stop. There's two bus stops on Flores, and they're directly opposite each other. Currently, the bus stop, when the bus pulls up to the bus stop, it can't park at the bus stop because it's too close to the traffic light. So if you actually ever do a traffic study there, you'll see that that bus pulls in front of the bus stop, which will be directly across the driveway, the exit driveway, to the gas station. This, in turn, will cause a restriction from vehicles exiting the 7-Eleven, and will also be an obstruction to people coming out of Jasmine, which is the adjacent street there. Every time this bus pulls up, the traffic will stop in that area because no one will be able to come out of the 7-Eleven, and it will be extremely difficult for vehicles coming off Moore Park Road, and will be a traffic congestion area and also an accident spot. I moved into this area 18 months ago. I work in real estate. In the 10 years I've been working in real estate, no one's ever asked me to live next to a gas station. When I drive clients around similar areas, and I tell them that there's a proposal or there's a gas station there, people tell me they don't want to live next to a gas station. So with the people living in the immediate area, this is going to have an effect on their property prices. The curb appeal to people in this area, in particularly my property as well, is not going to be too well when we want to sell this property. One of the concerns for me is that my daughter, she's only six and a half, in the long term, is that she wants to go to the high school. I don't want my daughter walking past the gas station with all the problems that can be associated with this gas station and living in this area that's going to be open 21 hours a day. There is going to be problems with noise. It is a noisy road, but we're going to add noise to this area with cars pulling up, people with radios talking, and other things at night. There's also a vagrance problem, which is coming in this area now, which is going to be accelerated with this gas station here. I believe the target for this gas station is the children in the high school. There is going to be people congregating in this gas station. They congregate there now, waiting for their bus. It's going to be filling up with kids. And we have already found out that selling of alcohol, tobacco, and vapes, there's going to be some restrictions on there. But that's going to encourage other people to come into the area and sell other things, other things that are not legal in the area, which we know is going to happen. There is going to be trash in the area. Even though there's going to be trash cans in the gas station, the trash is going to come outside the area because people are going to just put stuff down. It happens now. So what we're doing is we're introducing this into an area that we don't really want. Again, I oppose this. I don't think it's a great idea. When I moved into this area, when I bought into this area, this wasn't on the proposal. When people are buying in this area now, this is now a proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. Next will be Najid Kamaz, followed by Steve Nicholson. Good evening, sir. Thank you for coming.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Do we have the aerial photo, if you would?
Mr. Kamaz, can you share where you're from, please?
Sure. I live at 616 East Avenue, the last Flores. I am the house right across from the proposed project. I'm the corner and angled house.
Thank you.
And I oppose this project in several grounds. The applicant was kind enough in the planning commission meeting to share with the public that somewhere between 25% to 30% of their revenue, based on 7-Elevens' statistics, comes from sales of tobacco products. And that being right across the street from high school, that's outrageous. And even for them wanting to move forward with this project, personally, I think it's just greed anymore. But unfortunately, the city doesn't have anything to hold them back from that. There is no code that it already lost to prevent them from selling tobacco. On the other hand, they don't meet the setback. If you consider giving them the setback way where that they are asking for, you're simply taking away from my rights. So it's either me or them. Okay. I don't object having a project there, but simply a 7-Eleven is not suitable for that site. Come up with something else, something that works for the community. This is not it. 7-Eleven is not it. And that's pretty much it. So I really would like for you folks to consider denying their request. Thank you.
Steve Nicholson, followed by Timothy Corbett. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Steve Nicholson, 586 Cuyahoga, Thousand Oaks. I live four houses down from the office building. The community has been overwhelmingly against this project since its inception. The planning commission has twice been against approval of this project. There really is no good reason to place a 21-hour gas station, 7-Eleven, across the street from the high school in a residential area. This is a central business district project. This will not be good for our community. There will be problems of more vagrancy. I believe the trash issue is going to be bad. I believe that the traffic is going to be horrendous. There's going to be many accidents. If you're familiar with the area, in the mornings and the afternoon with the students, it's already extremely busy. It's just not going to be a good situation. The hours of operation proposed do not meet the city standards for a gas station, and they also need a variance for the setback. The setback may have to be approved at some point for the right project, but this is not the right project for this community. I've heard maybe, I think, two people, and one of them was a friend of the developer, stand up here and say that they're for this project. It's been overwhelmingly against it. Please do the right thing for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Timothy Corbett, followed by Lori Jacobs. Good evening, sir.
My name's Timothy Corbett. I'm at 417 Columbia Road. Got a couple of questions. I asked the planning commission last time about the site being cleaned up, and the architect briefly addressed that tonight, that the site had been cleaned. But according to the state website, that address is still on the state website as a contaminated site. So my question to the planning commission last time was, were the tanks removed? Everybody said the tanks were removed. Okay. So after that, how much of the soil do you have to remove? You got to have a soil sample. I've been in construction for 37 years. Okay? Lot of pipe and a gas station. I'm a plumbing contractor. How far down do you have to go to remove the contaminated soil? Okay? At that point, you're digging. The dust, everything's flying around the neighborhood. If it's contaminated, how do you control that contamination when you're doing the cleanup? If it's already been signed off on, the developer starts the project, uh-oh, we ran into contaminated soil. Okay. So now who's paying for that cleanup? Us, the developer? The city? We don't know. I'd really like to get real clear on that. And I'd really like for the city council and the planning commission to get real clear on that before they even consider any type of construction on that site. Yes, there was a gas station there before. Yes, there was a repair shop there before. Okay, great. So now the site's been cleaned up. So you want to put a gas station there again and contaminate it again? I mean, didn't Einstein say something about that, you know? But anyhow. So there's a couple other things I had, too. We don't know who the franchisee is going to be. Okay? So whoever ends up purchasing that, will they be able to appeal to the city council for an alcohol permit, another type of tobacco permit? And how many times will they be able to ask an appeal? I mean, we've been here, what, this all last year, I went through this, I went through the planning commission this year, meeting with you guys tonight. When is no, no? When is we're done, we're done? You know? Just, I'm sorry. Take your ball and go home. We're done. I don't, I understand that he has the right to appeal, and they have the right to ask. But I just don't understand. So if he does get the permit, he does build a store, the franchisee downs the road, goes, hey, okay, now we want to add a gas station. Now we want to sell liquor. So are we just going to keep getting beat like this and have to come here every three months? I don't think it's fair to the city, and I don't think it's fair to the neighborhood. And, you know, the sad thing is, is that it used to be, oh, thank heaven for 7-Eleven. But now I think it's kind of, heck, no, you got to go. I'm sorry. You know? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, and I'm still waiting for my invitation for lunch.
Come on.
Remember, last time, we were talking about the homeless thing. You said we need to do lunch.
He walked out. I was here.
All right. Give me a call.
All right. Lori Jacobs, followed by Mary Bell.
Hi, good evening. I'm Lori Jacobs, and I've kind of been following this since the very start, when there was a meeting near the TO, Thousand Oaks Park, next to the high school, just to discuss it with some local people. Thank you, city staff and council members, for taking the time to listen to us and consider this. I live about a mile away, so it's not going to kill my home value. But I really think it's a terrible idea for the community and for the people who live right beside it. I'm not anti-growth. I want to make that clear. I am excited about your new downtown project, and I thoroughly believe we need affordable housing in this community in order to maintain our economic growth. But I'm opposed to this, very much so. It's bad for the high school. It encourages something that the teachers are trying to teach kids the opposite of. It says, the teachers are working on health, on science, on PE, to try and get kids to take care of themselves, and then you're putting the ultimate temptation correctly across the street. The concerns for vaping, tobacco, and alcohol are real because their commitments are not binding. The residents cannot be guaranteed that that will remain that way into the future. Interesting, I was very interested that when the second proposal was put in, they pulled their promise to not sell tobacco. I'm not sure what a three-hour difference in their hours makes to tobacco sales, but I have seen some real anger on the part of Mr. Megdal here, and I do wonder if it's a matter of spite. I have seen him, he's been, he's a good salesman, I'll give you that much. He uses all the sales techniques, but he hasn't been completely honest, even directly, to me. The last city planning meeting that we went to, I went up to speak to somebody after, as did he, and the subject of this letter the school board sent to you, council members, was brought up, and he told me that their letter was in favor of a 7-Eleven. And I think we all know that that is not the case. In the city of TO, you have always, you, prior city councils, have always limited late-night businesses, and especially 24-hour businesses. Of the three other 7-Elevens in our, four? Four other 7-Elevens within the city, only one of them is located near residential properties in the same way that this one is. One is downtown TO, right on TO Boulevard, and the other are away from private homes. The one that is located near private homes, that I can't find out, I haven't been able to find out, maybe you know, when the 7-Eleven went in, but I know that that strip mall was built in 1969, as were the houses directly behind it. So any effect on the property values took place from the very start. I want to address their comment about noise, and there already being noise. I happen to have a physical therapist in that medical building that we are referring to right next door. It's quiet as a mouse. I go there, I went there at the latest possible appointment, and at 7:00 PM, the people from the physical therapy office walk out of the building with me and lock it and leave. When I arrive at 6:00 or 5:00, the parking lot is already mostly empty. It's not a noisy operation by any means. The strip mall across Flores is also one of relatively low-traffic business. The highest traffic would have to be the Domino's, and it's primarily delivery. So compared to the prior gas station, hours, hours, hours. By the time people come home to rest at night, that mobile station wasn't making as much noise. Certainly by the time they went to bed, it was closed and dark and quiet. There were no lights to disrupt their bedrooms. There were no customers coming in and out late at night, and no traffic late at night. I've been on Moore Park Road, and yeah, it's a pretty heavy-duty highway during the daytime. I happen to be a night owl. You'll find me at the Jan's gas station at midnight sometimes. But I drive on Moore Park Road there, for, because I have to go down Flores to get to my home, and there's practically nobody there. Traffic noise is not an issue at 10 o'clock at night. 7-Eleven noise will be. And I'd finally like to say that-
Your time's up.
My time is up. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schri-
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, dear. Mary Bell, followed by Ann. Mary Bell?
Good evening. My name is Mary Bell. I work in the city of Thousand Oaks, and I'm for the project. I just wanted to say what the big, I want to know what the big deal is about the project. The developer has already, you know, stated that he would change the hours, and that wouldn't sell any vapes or alcohol products, and it's still a concern. As far as the students going to that area and noise, it's going to happen anyway. Anything you put there, it's quiet now, of course, it's empty. Soon as you put something there- you put there, it's quiet now, of course, it's empty. Soon as you put something there, that's going to go away. So I think it should just be reconsidered. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Bell. Next will be Ann, followed by Pamela Scott. Good evening.
Hello, my name's Ann Murray-Winnick, and I live at 1990 Montgomery Road, but I'm also representing the 1,000-member organization of Ventura County Issues Reform, who are also opposed to this project. This has already been appealed. Clearly, Thousand Oaks does not want it, and I'm sorry that this is taking the time of the council tonight. I find it interesting that as I've monitored discussion about this project for months on the Nextdoor app, most parties are opposed. The one or two that are open to it, not necessarily excited about it, are residents in the Wildwood area north of the location, because they don't want to travel another mile to the other 7-Eleven at Wilber and Moore Park Road. That would be inconvenient. I propose that these folks think ahead and do a little planning, and remember to get their beverages when they are closer to the freeway, and when the other, let me start over. They'd like a late-night option for getting their sloopy or coffee, so they can work at home into the night. I propose that these folks think ahead, do a little planning, and remember to get their beverages when they are closer to the freeway, where other venues are open later, such as the USA gas station that you mentioned earlier. Just for that minor convenience, that is not fair to those of us that will have to put up with the increased traffic, the crime that will eventually develop, and the pollution to our pleasant city and neighborhood. This 7-Eleven store is not a need for our community. Apparently, a huge amount of money was spent to excavate the gas barrels and remains of the previous gas station that was there before. That was to clean the site and support the adjacent neighborhoods in a safe, healthy place to live. Why would the city agree to put this pollution back on that site? How is that a responsible plan for this city? The superficial fixes that the applicant is proposing will not erase the negative impact on our community socially, financially, and the decline in our property values. The landowner needs to find a different idea for this project, because this one is not the solution. This idea puts our neighbors and the students at Thousand Oaks High School at risk for unhealthy food options, eventual crime, and drug handling, as we know the current 7-Eleven at Wilber is already overwhelmed with. We're seeing in the news that kids are dying from this new trend of vaping, and we all know this proposed 7-Eleven would only promote more of that activity. Thousand Oaks has been known as the safest city in the U.S. This idea would not help us remain that safe city. We understand that the applicant just has to wait a year to apply for an alcohol license, so even though they might say that they're not going to do that, we know it's coming down the road. The previous principal at Thousand Oaks High School was opposed to the idea of Starbucks and another idea that was proposed. That principle is no longer at Thousand Oaks High School, therefore, those precious ideas should be reconsidered. Please, city council, serve the people of Thousand Oaks, of your community first. Please listen to us, not the money-hungry land developers and franchises that want to come into our town to try and change it all up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Pamela Scott, followed by Jason Schlimgen. Good evening. Thank you for coming.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. My name is Pamela Scott. I'm a commercial retail broker that has been servicing Ventura County since 1981. My territory includes Ventura County for these 40 years. I used to commute here and worked the first 10 years exclusively in Ventura County, although I live in Santa Barbara. I have worked on many intersections in the city during that time. I feel I know this location and the community well. The site has been empty for so many years for a reason. It is a secondary intersection in the city. It's not Janes', it's not Avenue de las Arboles', and so only a certain time of, type of use can succeed here, regardless of staff's opinion or even your planning commission's imagined perfect use. I am dismayed and disappointed that a neighborhood convenience market with a gas station across from a high school that supports it would be so demonized by a handful. It is a convenience market. There is nothing in the community plan that would disallow this use. Going through the entitlement process, there have been no negative impacts to the community. The school is deportive. This company has acceded to the community's wish that no alcohol be sold or vapes. It has, uncuriously for this franchise, shortened the hours of operation to be a good neighbor. Mitigation by the stakeholders of lighting, traffic, environmental, or safety impacts have been followed. The state of California is over the top in their current requirements for new gas stations and their tanks. The developer worked in good faith with the school district and the police department to ensure the site's maximum safety. After 40 years of doing this, what troubles me is property like this one that fits all the historic land use and neighborhood compatibility requirements can be arbitrarily denied because unelected officials choose whatever use they would imagine to be perfect, regardless of the market considerations. What worries me is you lose the property owner's rights. They are trumped by personal belief about what should be allowed, even if it's consistent with the community plan. This is a slippery slope. The developer spent hundreds of thousands of dollars and over two years believing this was within the scope of the community plan. Please understand that there will be, that the franchisee is going to be a local individual, a local businessman, not a corporate monolith running the convenience store. He is under strict controls as a franchisee for safetiness and cleanliness in all the 7-Eleven stores. The convenience market can be an asset to many neighborhoods. It serves a purpose. There is nothing magical that could happen on that long, empty corner that this project prevents. Please approve the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. And then Jason Schlimgen, closer. I hope I didn't butcher your name too bad. Thanks.
Jason Schlimgen, I'm at 267 Dyer Court. Just something kind of simple, I think, in reading the permitting process, it seems to me the C1 permit is for a neighborhood shopping center. My understanding is that's for the needs of the neighborhood. Gasoline, cigarettes, soft drinks are not needed in this neighborhood. It's a Trader Joe's not far away, Avon's, CVS, Ralph's, and Rite Aid, and gas stations there. So I'm, it seems to me that the neighborhood has spoken and do not want or need this particular location. That is why I don't understand how they got even this far to the permitting standpoint with the C1 permit. That's all I'll say.
Thank you, sir. Well, do we have any questions from the council for either the staff or anyone? Councilmember Bittila Peña?
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. I do have a question regarding, a couple of mention of a letter from the, I guess, current principal, which was issued, I believe, back in August 2018, a year ago. Has that letter been recalled, so to speak, for lack of a better word, by the district, or did the district not weigh in saying that this letter did not represent the position of the district?
An email from Principal Bergman was submitted to our economic development manager a few years back, 2017. Subsequently, the Canadian Valley Unified School District Board considered the item. They did not take a position as to whether or not to support or oppose the project. They just stated concerns regarding the projects and things they would like to see incorporated into the operation. So there's no formal position from the school board.
And they did not weigh in on the email or letter from the principal either?
I did not see a formal.
Okay. Then, the other question I have is the comment made regarding the site still being contaminated because it's still listed on the state's website. So if you could clarify that for us?
Yeah, the applicant submitted with the original application, a certification letter from the county resource management agency, demonstrating that the fuel tanks were removed in 2004, and subsequently, soil remediation action was performed, and it was certified as cleaned in 2014.
Yet it still appears on the website. What is it, the Department of Toxic Substances and Control? Is that the website maybe that was referenced? I don't know.
That's the website that was referenced, but I've not seen that information.
Thank you.
Councilmember Angler?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Kearns, I was wondering, a lot of comments that I know we all have received, and I know I received, have to do with traffic issues and having to do with the allegation that this will aggravate those traffic issues. Can you go a little bit into what you've looked into at that location, and any remediation that you have recommended?
Yeah, I'd like to invite Kathy Now, our traffic analyst, to discuss that topic.
Good evening, Kathy Now, members of the city council. The term "will aggravate" traffic in the area, yes, it will. The most significant uniqueness about this parcel, it's bounded by three public streets, and the frontage access on Flores is only 90 feet wide. So the driveway is, does not even meet the minimum standards of driveway spacing for commercial projects, whether it's to an intersection or between driveways. In addition, because it's bounded by three public streets, and there's currently a center turn lane, there are six points of conflict for anyone coming in and out of the driveway. So just at any time of day, there's the possibility of having more points of conflict than you'd have at any other gas station in the city, because it's proximity to Cali-Jasmin, Flores, and Moore Park.
Was there any consideration for pedestrians that perhaps would be coming across from the high school to partake in this location?
Yes, we looked at the, currently, there's, I counted, there's about 300 pedestrians that use the intersection during the day, and you could say almost half of them are going to cross the driveway, either to be picked up by their parents or whoever picks them up on Cali-Jasmin or down on Flores, as well as people who get off the bus stop. And then you add that all the pedestrians that would be in the parking lot, that would be in conflict with anyone queuing into the gas station.
One of the public speakers did mention the bus stops. Is the proposed project going to impede on the busing, or is there a way to mitigate that?
Well, the, when the project went to planning commission last time, we imposed the condition that as a right-in, right-out driveway only, with no lefts in, mainly because there's the, it's the close proximity to the intersection, and then in addition to the bus stop, which creates a site distance problem, and there's also the possibility of an even greater site distance problem with, which would be the proposed sign that would be at the corner of the project. So yes, the bus stop creates a site distance problem with the driveway.
Thank you so much, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, Ms. Now, I don't know how long you've been with the city. That was a gas station up until 2005. Do you know if there were traffic problems that were created by this gas station when it was in operation?
We don't have records that go back to 2005 that I was able to access. So, and I also wouldn't say whether there was a problem or not. There's always conflicts with driveways, but we don't have anything that we can point to to say that that was or wasn't a problem.
So we don't know either way, whether it was a problem or it wasn't a problem?
That's correct.
And do you know how many parking areas there will be on-site if people want to use the 7-Eleven and not use the gas station part?
The service building is, which generates parking demand, or the convenience store, so there'll be 10 spaces provided on the site.
And does that seem adequate to you?
That complies with the parking demand requirements in the code.
I noticed that in the earlier use, there was a driveway on Jasmine when it was a mobile gas station. I see that has been moved to Flores. Is that correct, the driveway?
Yeah, there's two driveways to be abandoned, the one that you referenced on Cali-Jasmin near the intersection, and one near the intersection on Moore Park Road and Avenue de Flores. Those two will be abandoned, and a driveway will be on Avenue de Flores.
Okay, well, there will be one on Moore Park, will there?
Yes, there'll be a driveway shared with the medical office building to the south, which accesses the site from Moore Park Road.
And there will be one on Flores?
Yes, that's the proposal.
Does that appear to be a problem with traffic or pedestrians or whatever? I presume the one on Jasmine was moved because of potential noise to the homeowners. Is that it?
Yeah, the applicant is proposing a privacy wall, which will extend into this area where the driveway is. So the driveway location is now on Avenue de Flores. There's not one on Jasmine. So it does help with the noise and the privacy.
That does help, you feel, for the homeowners. And one, I don't know if you know the reason for this, but I noticed the tobacco was excluded from the earlier application, and now it's been reinstated. Do you, did the applicant give a reason for reinstating tobacco?
Yeah, the project that was presented to the planning commission on April 1st excluded tobacco, vape, and alcohol on April 1st, the day of the meeting. The applicant's representation submitted a letter stating they did want to sell tobacco, and that was discussed at the planning commission hearing. There's no state law, there's no federal law that allows the city to proactively restrict the sale of tobacco products. So on the subsequent application, when they no longer requested the cell, when they requested tobacco sales, we could not proactively impose a condition.
I presume I can ask the applicant why he reinstated tobacco. And one last thing, I got a lot of anonymous emails from purporting to be teachers and students at Thousand Oaks High School. I really tend not to pay a lot of attention. If people, you know, won't sign their names, I don't, I wonder if they're real people or, you know, I don't give as much credence, as I would say, to that. And they spoke about the desirability of having students go there to get their lunch. Do you know what food products would be sold?
I do not know exactly what will be sold.
Well, I can ask the applicant.
Yeah, the applicant can respond to that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember, or, excuse me, Mayor Protem Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. You mentioned 300 people use a crosswalk every day?
Yes, they use the intersection. That was missing on a day count that I did.
I presume most of them are high school kids, right?
100% of the people I counted were high school kids.
I would think so.
I counted during morning and afternoon pickup and drop-off. I didn't, I wasn't there 24 hours.
Because one of the concerns mentioned in the staff report was this business of congregation at the site. Is the presumption because of the so many, so much traffic crossing over there, that's what's going to lead to the congregation at that site?
I think that in a combination of, that's where kids could go just hang out and then get picked up. Then their parents don't have to try to fight the high school driveways. They could just hang, you know, pick them up within the neighborhood, so the kids could hang out. And they do that at some other places in the city, too, where the schools are close to shopping centers.
Oh, I see. So it could, serves an alternate pickup site?
Absolutely.
I get you. That's the congregation that you're speaking of, then?
During, I would say during drop-off and pickup time. That's what that would be for.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Well, we don't have any more questions, so the applicant has a five-minute rebuttal. Excuse me, sorry. Staff, follow-up, then city attorney, and then you'll be up. Mr. Scribner, I apologize. Staff?
Thank you very much, Mayor McCoy. I'd like to just respond to a few of the comments that were made. Start off with the presentation by Mr. Scribner. I appreciate your comments. There's a statement that the C1 zone requires 100-foot setback from the center line of streets, and that is the case. That was recognized in the staff report. Staff acknowledged that any above-ground structure on this project, this property, would require a waiver. That is something that will have to happen for any development of the site, as long as it's on C1. Staff, staff's analysis is based on the proposal before you tonight, which was a convenience store and a service station. In the early stages, when we discussed this project, the convenience store location was predicated by the actual, the service station, gas pump component of the project, which required certain access points for circulation in and out of the site, as well as for the fuel supply vehicles getting in and out of the site. So moving the building to squeeze that the site. So, moving the building to squeeze that driveway access was not a possibility at the time. So, taking the finding for denial based on the setback waiver was the proximity to the residential side, and that was the convenience store. The applicant mentioned during his presentation that the hours of operation would be 6:00 to 11:00. What's before this evening and what was presented and analyzed by staff were hours of 5:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. So, we have not, this is the first we've heard of it. So, 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. has not been presented to us. With regard to the lighting and the noise, there will be noise that's generated from the site, from the fuel supplies vehicles, customers visiting the site, the customers' vehicles, during these late-night operations, from all the way to 2:00 a.m. as proposed. And the light source, we can review the light, the lighting plan, which is a photometric plan, to make sure that the lighting doesn't spill beyond the property lines, but the light source itself will be in the canopy, which is located about 17 feet above the ground. With the, in regard to the roofing material, the architectural design guidelines, they do allow for metal roofs. Subject to it be compatible with the adjacent land uses. The C1 zone also states that the architectural should be compatible with the adjacent land uses. In this case, staff determined, and staff's recommendation, was that the metal roofing, the standing seam metal roofing was not compatible and did not support that. However, the planning commission had the ability, as does the City Council, to approve a roofing material, the appropriate, if they choose to approve the project. The condition that was referenced by Mr. Scribner, number 18, with regard to the roofing, was a suggested condition, should the planning commission approve the project, staff recommendation was to deny the project, and the planning commission took that recommendation. There were many, many comments made regarding the hours of operation, and staff clarified that, that the hours of operation are inconsistent with the area. And this concludes staff's comments.
Okay, and then we'll hear from the city attorney, and then the applicant will have his rebuttal.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. Just wanted to talk for a few minutes, because it does appear, based on some of the public comments and written documents, that there's confusion regarding this appeal. First and foremost, this is an appeal of the denial of a project. The project as proposed by the applicant is what is being appealed tonight. In other words, the proposed hours of operation, location of the driveways, location of the buildings, roof type, et cetera, that is the basis of the appeal tonight. Any proposed revisions by the applicant tonight are really outside the scope of this appeal, as the appeal is based on the denial of the project that was proposed to the planning commission. Second, since this project was not approved, draft conditions of approval that were part of the planning commission are not a basis of the appeal. They were not taken into consideration because the planning commission denied the project that was proposed that evening. There was a prior project considered by the planning commission in April 2019. That project and the decision by the planning commission is not before the City Council on this appeal, as the applicant did not appeal that decision. Now, I want to talk a couple of minutes about the difference between a development permit and a special use permit. Zoning codes that we have in every city, they set forth where uses are appropriate, where houses should go, where manufacturing uses should go, grocery stores, gas stations, hardware stores, et cetera. The zoning code will also set forth certain uses that are permitted with a development permit. And those are when staff or the city determine that those types of uses are appropriate in almost all areas of that particular zone. The zoning code will also set forth what's called a special use permit, and those are imposed on certain types of uses where it's, those uses are appropriate in many locations within that zone, but not all of the locations due to potential impacts from the type of the use. So, when you're processing a special use permit, you're looking at the compatibility of the proposed use with the use surrounding the neighborhood. And the legal importance of that, of the SUP, is the legal recognition that some uses, even when they're compliant with general guidelines, are not appropriate in every location in that zone. That is why one of the basis for denial of the SUP is the determination that the use is not compatible with the surrounding community. And when you look at the findings that the planning commission made when they denied the project at the planning commission level, the findings are in the resolution, and that goes to the compatibility of it. So, when you have planning commissioners, or even the City Council that sits up at the dais, and they have general comments about what they like about a project, what they don't like about a project, concerns they have about a project, at the end of the day, when they make a decision whether to approve or deny a project, they're looking at what the findings are. The findings are what's most important, and the findings are what is the legal basis for either approval of a project or denial of a project. That's it.
Thank you. Mr. Scribner, I'm sorry to make you stand up there and then have to sit down again. It's my first time being mayor.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, some of the questions, we do have a letter, we gave that to the staff when we started the project, certifying this site is clean, and that was very important, of course. I said, when I started, the neighbors nearby bought their houses when it was a gas station. No one here denied that, all the speakers. It's true. They actually bought their houses when it was a gas station with a three-bay repair shop. Now, regarding the setbacks, I'm still kind of confused. This is a C1, which is a neighborhood shopping center, normally acres in size, requiring 100-foot setback from all the streets. Now, the staff said they'd like a 100-foot setback from the rear. Well, that street's 60 feet, so that would be a 70-foot setback to the building. And then, I have a letter on file asking you to set it back 50 feet from Moore Park. And yet, one of their reasons for denial, because we're asking for a variance. I've asked many times, where would you put the building? I've asked the staff. Two years, we've been working on this. I yet to have an answer. Where did we put the building? My client has looked at Starbucks. Starbucks was mentioned by, one of the neighbors would like a Starbucks. He started with that, but then it was decided, all the traffic and all that would be a problem. So, he dropped that. He looked at restaurants, he looked at other uses. It's a small site, so it's not really adaptable to too many uses. So, it seemed like, and with the support of the principal, the staff asked him to meet with the high school principal to get his ideas, support, whatever. And there is a letter where Principal Bergman supports the project, and I read to you what he said. That's probably in your staff report. So, it is supported by the principal. The gas station before had four driveways. We now have two, plus we've actually, our first one is going to be on Moore Park. It's already there for the medical building. We're just going to share that. So, we're really just adding one more, and we're actually eliminated two driveways on Moore Park Road and one at the rear to Cali Jasmine, because we realized the neighbors certainly wouldn't want us to be exiting with headlights going into their house. My client, if you approve it, he will operate at 6:00 to 11:00. He stated he would do that, he will honor that. And so, if you approve it, it will not be till 2:00 in the morning. It will be 6:00 to 11:00. If you'd like him to get up and say that to you, fine. But I want you to be assured that that is when he would operate this store, this gas station, from 6:00 to 11:00. So, with that, do you have any questions, please?
Counsel, doesn't look like they have any questions, so. I'll do it.
Could I, Mr. Mayor?
Would you press the button?
Yes, I will.
Go ahead, you're in. Councilmember Jones?
Do you know of what food products they're planning to sell? I thought maybe the owner was going to speak.
The owner knows. He's really proud of that. They've done a lot of things to improve through the recent years.
And do you know why he reinstated tobacco?
I'm sorry?
Do you know why he reinstated tobacco?
It was for economic reasons. I know that.
And do you know?
They're, normally, you know, they sell alcohol and everything, or these places. That's a big income, I'm sure. So, they dropped the alcohol and the vaping.
No, I understand.
But they want to keep the tobacco.
And do you know what food products they're planning to have?
May I ask the applicant to answer that?
I just wonder about all the letters I got, that people want to go there and eat from the high school. I was wondering what they would eat.
Well, the school is very excited, the coach, one of the coaches, because it's a place where the students can come over and eat. If you've been around that school lunch, you know, they all get in their cars, and they drive to 7-Eleven down at Jan's Road, and they drive to other places to eat lunch. This gives them a place to eat. They don't have to leave the area. They don't have to drive.
If they could go to the school cafeteria, they could.
I'm sorry?
They could eat at the school cafeteria, I presume.
Yeah. I remember I had that opportunity, and I very seldom did it, so.
Well, I had a closed campus. That was the only choice, unless you wanted to bring a sack lunch. We used to bring, we used to bring.
California.
Can you imagine the handicap or the sacrifice we had to make? A lot of us would bring a brown paper bag with our lunch, and could you imagine having to do that?
I can. I used to eat Spam, believe it or not.
Does that have to do with your hair color?
Yes, it does.
Pardon me, Mr. Mayor, I'm through.
All right, well, I think, Mr. Scribner, that about does it, so. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That closes our hearing, our public hearing. Counsel discussion? Councilmember Engler?
I think just to put a little preamble to it, I wanted to thank all the people who sent us information, and sent us opinions, and gave us viewpoints. I appreciate meeting with the developer. To get information helps us make proper decisions, and I thank you all for it as a preamble. Part of, most of the comments, I think, that I received, and I think most of you received them as well, from the neighborhood, the preponderance of comments were opposed to the project. And they're basically in three general categories. One of them was the traffic and pedestrian issues that I mentioned to our staff. There's an anticipation that crime will increase in the area. And then, especially those who are nearby, they were very concerned about the noise and light pollution that will result from a business at that location. Now, the other neighbors who were in favor, I think, they see the benefit to having a neighborhood shopping center, neighborhood market. And more than a few people were sensitive to the ability of a person who owns a property to build what will make sense to them on that property. So, I think the preponderance, though, was in the negative. There was a few people in favor. The school, we have a letter from our school district that is neither committal nor, either for nor against. They have some concerns that they aired, and that was about it. We did receive letters and cards and emails from students who are, and believe it or not, I was young once, who are really looking forward to someplace to go get something to eat. So, I think that's from the school district side of things. But, in the, going back into the 1980s, 1990s, the city has a long history of concern about development in that area. As mentioned before, there was a dairy across the street where that shopping center is now. When that was redeveloped, there was a lot of restrictions put on what could go into that neighborhood area. That had a minimal impact on the residential just across the street. There was, to the point now, I don't think you can even get a slice of pizza at the Domino's. You have to order full pizzas. So, they're still attempting to restrict and limit the amount of impact on the neighboring residential. Unfortunately, with this particular location, where there'll be a gas station directly across a narrow street from housing, I'm not sure how we can limit that impact anymore to a residence who is definitely going to feel the effect of having a business right across the street that is open by proposal until, was it 2:00 in the morning? And I appreciate that there's a possibility of that being less, but we need to vote on what the proposal is tonight. So, with that, I have severe hesitation to approve the project and would support, supporting the planning commission's findings.
Mayor Protem Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I think the key issue facing the council tonight is summed up in one word, compatibility, compatibility with the surrounding area. It's not the roof, it's not the setback. I mean, in my mind, anyway, those are fairly minor considerations. It's compatibility with the surrounding area. And I know there was a, whatever a drive-through dairy is, that was before my time, and a service station.
No, it wasn't.
What?
No, it wasn't.
What's that, Rob?
You're supposed to be honest. This is not true.
It was, but anyway. Okay, Rob, you threw me off there, buddy. Anyway, and I know there was a service station there before, but I think the use now would be, I would consider it to be more intense than the prior two uses. Now, we're talking about a gas station and a convenience store both. And, again, compatibility. We have residences within 60 feet of the proposed project. There's really close proximity. The hours as proposed don't line up with our service station guidelines. We got the high school right across the street, and granted, I mean, I know some letters came in from the high school, but it seemed to me that they didn't really take a stand, but did issue some concerns about the students crossing the street, about health, about safety, et cetera. And I listened to the staff tonight about the 300 people crossing every day and this business of congregation. And I didn't quite know what congregation mean, but I think I do now, in the sense that they'll use it as a pickup spot for the kids. I mean, my kids went to Westlake High School. The issue of picking up children is incredible, incredibly impactful to the area. And I think traffic is going to be a real issue at that intersection as well. And when you talk about the surrounding area, you do have businesses, but they're mostly passive-use businesses. You know, I think there's a medical office there, there's the Domino's, which is mostly takeout. This is a very active use, a very active use. A lot of people driving in and out till late in the evening. And, you know, I mean, I get it, it's convenient for people, you know, they're going to enjoy it for their 10 minutes that they're there. But the residents around there are there 24/7, seven days a week, 365 days a year. They can't really escape the, to me, which would be a pretty impactful situation for them. And I, nobody likes to say no to a project, but I just haven't heard anything tonight that really would... But I just haven't heard anything tonight that really would offset the planning commission's decision to deny this project. And my view is really based on compatibility with the surrounding area. I just don't think it quite meets the criteria.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Councilmember Bill de la Peña.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. I wanted to thank the applicant, as well as staff, and those who came to speak tonight as well. The, as my colleagues have already stated, what really is before us tonight are, it's an appeal to a planning commission decision based on setback deviation and also based on hours of operation and the fact that staff and the planning commission found that the project will be detrimental to the general welfare and also because of its incompatibility with the surrounding areas. When we speak about the general welfare, not only are there traffic concerns, pedestrian concerns, but there are also bus stop siding issues, for example, that were mentioned tonight. What was brought back before us, and the planning commission really is no different. I saw that hours were, you were proposing to change them in your survey from the weekend, from 5:00 a.m. to midnight over the weekend. That's what residents were told. This evening, we hear 6:00 a.m. until 11:00 p.m. So, but that is not before us tonight. Before us is what the planning commission heard and their findings. And I see absolutely no reason at all to overrule or overturn the planning commission's findings on this particular case. So I move that we approve the staff recommendation to deny the appeal.
So we have a motion. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, will you please put forward the vote?
The motion carries 5-0.
Could we have a five-minute?
We're going to take a five-minute break. All right, item 9A, department report. Melissa Hurtado.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy and council members. I'm here accompanied by Patrick Hehurst, Assistant City Attorney and Chief of Police, Tim Hagel. And we're here to discuss the cannabis program. So tonight, we're going to provide you a brief history of the cannabis program and an update on the various components. Finally, we will present options on further actions for you to consider. City council historically maintained a ban on all cannabis activity. In 2016, after voters passed Proposition 64, the city was required to allow for personal use of cannabis and the ability to grow up to six plants for personal use. After a desire from community members to see some commercial activity in the medical cannabis arena, city council adopted an ordinance to allow for one medical cannabis dispensary and one testing laboratory. After a comprehensive application and review process, Legendary Organics was selected to operate the medical dispensary at 2712 Canejo Center Drive. There were no successful testing laboratory applicants at the time. Earlier this year, the Bureau of Cannabis Control amended their regulations to allow licensed retailers to deliver cannabis throughout the state, rendering the city's ban on deliveries invalid. To address the state decision, city council amended the cannabis ordinance to place regulations on cannabis deliveries and require the businesses to register and pay taxes. Additionally, city council authorized staff to reopen the application for the testing laboratory. There was a lawsuit filed against the Bureau of Cannabis Control, which is ventued in Fresno. The case is in the beginning stages of discovery and no dispositive motions have been filed at this time. We suspect a result in this case will not occur until late 2020. Therefore, we shall assume deliveries will be permitted for the foreseeable future. The applications for the one testing laboratory permit were accepted from June 3rd to July 19th. Three applications were received and are under evaluation with the city's consultant, HDL Companies. It is anticipated that the top applicant will be presented to city council in November. In July, the Finance Department sent notices to 112 licensed cannabis retailers in Ventura, Santa Barbara, and Los Angeles counties. About a dozen of them have called into the city to ask questions. And as of today, four businesses submitted business license applications, and one of those has been approved. Last week, finance staff sent reminder notices to the businesses asking them to advise the city whether they will be delivering into Thousand Oaks. Staff will continue to follow up and will work with the police department to monitor the delivery activity. Additionally, the Finance Department will work with the delivery businesses to ensure that the appropriate cannabis tax is remitted. And Chief Hagel is going to talk a little bit about enforcement.
Thank you, Melissa. Council, staff, and also those in the audience. The Thousand Oaks Police Department is committed to enforcement of all laws within our community, both state and municipal. These codes extend to those that are state-licensed existing marijuana delivery services. As Melissa stated, there are approximately 112 in the service area in Ventura County and the West San Fernando Valley, West Los Angeles area that consider the Thousand Oaks area part of their service delivery area. These delivery companies are licensed by the state and choose to deliver their recreational medicinal marijuana within our city boundaries. The police department has conducted compliance checks and investigations of state cannabis-controlled regulated delivery companies who are advertising for deliveries in the Canejo Valley to ensure that they are meeting our local city ordinances, regulations, for the requirement that they maintain business license and pay sales tax on their transactions. The investigations are still ongoing with the police department at this time on these operating delivery services. Each one will be dealt with. I'll provide those details on a future date. However, at this time, I can report to the council that each and every delivery service that we have contacted with our investigators and arranged to buy marijuana here in the Canejo Valley, each and every one of these compliance checks were delivered here locally to our investigators, and not one of them, in fact, had a business license in the city of Thousand Oaks.
Thank you, Chief Hagel.
Okay, so as you are aware, last August, the city entered into an operations agreement with Legendary Organics to operate a single medical dispensary in Thousand Oaks at 2712 Canejo Center Drive. A permit was issued in September, but Legendary Organics has not opened for business at this time. As you will probably hear tonight from representatives of Legendary Organics, the company is seeking to move to a new location before beginning operations. Their current cannabis business permit expires on December 31st, 2019, unless renewed. When last checked, no state cannabis license has been issued to Legendary Organics for operations in Thousand Oaks. As you may also recall, a cannabis tax was passed, measure was passed by voters in November of 2018, which imposes a 4% business tax on cannabis retail sales. Since Legendary Organics has not opened, there is no tax revenue specific to our city. Our tax measure also covers deliveries into our city, as just noted, from outside retailers. But because it is a quarterly tax and we have just begun the licensing process for deliveries, this revenue cannot be collected at this time and will not be known until November. Now, there's also a rising market in industrial hemp, CBD oil from industrial hemp. Federal regulations have recently changed with what we call the State Farm Bill, I'm sorry, the Farm Bill of 2018. And what this did is this change in the federal government And what this did is this change in the federal government is they took CBD oil from industrial hemp out of a cannabis product and into its own agricultural type of seed. So this, what this does is it allows the possibility of using the industrial hemp product, including oil, without the risk, under the federal government, of prosecution. Similarly, the state is entertaining legislation to further regulate products using either the hemp plant or oil from the hemp seeds. And for the public and for you as well, industrial hemp is similar to cannabis. The big difference, of course, is that for industrial hemp, it has 0.3% or less of the THC, which is a psychoactive component normally associated with cannabis. And so this has been a big switch. The state is recognizing that the industrial hemp market is changing, and they're starting to do some legislation to do this, to allow more of CBD oil from industrial hemp. So staff is starting to see business permit applications directly related to sale of CBD oil from products associated with hemp. And since this is an emerging market, we'll be closely monitoring this new use and request for applications. It is also significant to note that because the federal government changed the definition of industrial hemp, what it did is it took it from the Schedule I drug, which is what cannabis is, to a Schedule V drug. And so that changed the focus of it to allow the cultivation, the manufacturing, and also using products with it. There is a caveat, of course, and that caveat is that currently with state legislation pending, they might allow hemp to be used in certain food products, for example, but there has to be some ability to note that it has no contaminants, and they have to show that it is following a certain type of path, like a track and trace system, so that the hemp oil or the hemp seeds that you're using is from a reliable source. All right, so with all this background, we're going to talk about options that we have for you tonight. Now, it's important to note that some of these options may require additional steps by staff and council if chosen. The first option is simply to start over with an entirely new process. This would include going through new applications for a dispensary and selection of a new operator or several operators. This option, of course, would be the most time-consuming for staff, consultants, because it would require evaluating new products, new applicants, and the new publications, reviewing, rating, interviews, presentation to council, and related steps. Now, you might recall that one of the primary factors articulated when you made the decision to allow one medical dispensary in the city was a concern for access. And with the current BCC regulation allowing for deliveries of both recreational and medicinal cannabis statewide, patients who previously drove to a different county for their medical cannabis may now have it delivered to their home. Therefore, a second option would be to close out the operations agreement with Legendary Organics and not issue any further application license pending the outcome of the lawsuit filed against the BCC. Option three is to process a new application and operations agreement with Legendary Organics at a new business location. Staff would evaluate the new location, present the proposed location to City Council for approval, and then enter into a new operations agreement specific to the new site, if that is the council's decision. Option number four would be to proceed with awarding a cannabis business permit and negotiate an operations agreement with last year's runner-up Leaf Dispensary. Finally, another option to consider tonight would be a revision of restrictions currently in place. Nope. Thank you. Apologize for that. So option five, I'm sorry, is to direct staff to process a new application and operations agreement for Legendary Organics at a new business location, as well as negotiate a second agreement with Leaf Dispensary at its proposed location. This option would allow residents to meet with consultants at a brick and mortar facility in Thousand Oaks to discuss needs for medicinal cannabis in an office setting. Finally, another consideration would be to whether City Council is interested in staff exploring other cannabis commercial operations, such as recreational, retail, cultivation, manufacturing, or distribution. Finally, one other option would be to consider a revision of restrictions currently in place for the one dispensary. Examples would include the current restrictions, or looking at the current restrictions of operating hours, appointment requirement, and prohibition of delivery service. Now, tonight, City Council may direct staff to return with action items related to one or more of the options discussed tonight. Some of these options, as important to note, may require staff to amend the cannabis ordinance to reflect council's direction. So we have this last slide for you where we present the seven options for you to consider. This is a summary, and depending on an option chosen by council, if any, staff may need further direction from you on future action items. Also note that in preparation of this agenda item, staff did invite representatives from Legendary Organics and Leaf Dispensary to attend this meeting, and you may also have other public speakers as well. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. Questions from the council? Councilmember Bill de la Peña.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. I just would like some clarification on the options here. What is the difference between three and five?
Option number three would have you direct us to open a new application for Legendary Organics at the new business location. Number five would direct staff to open the application process or open the operating agreement for Legendary Organics and Leaf Dispensary. So it would be two dispensaries.
In the staff report, it says, let me just go to that page really quickly, under three, "as required by ordinance," with a review process as required by ordinance.
Right, so when you have a new location, there's a requirement under our ordinance that you evaluate the location. We go back and look at the security plan, we look at other factors surrounding factors. All those evaluation aspects need to go back into any location that's suggested.
Okay, so tonight's presentation and the staff report all mean the same, but we left out the "as required by the city ordinance." Okay, that's the clarification that I needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Engler?
I was not on, thank you, Mayor. I was not on the council when this was discussed a year, year and a half ago or so.
You didn't miss anything.
I was wondering, to start a whole new process, there's going to be some staff time that's going to be devoted to that. What type of time horizon would that include? So how long would it take us to start a whole new process?
Well, it would certainly take months. We used a consultant, and we would recommend using the same consultant again at HDL Companies to help us with that process. It is an option that we felt that we had to provide to you, simply because certainly it's something that you can consider. But it would take months, and part of it would be, we would want to bring back, if you were going that direction, to ensure that we have the same process, you want to approve the same process, factors that you want to consider. Those are things that we would bring back to you and then go out and do the whole proposal, almost like a pseudo RFP, if you will. And that would require having applicants timely respond, evaluating applications, then going through a vetting process, then going through a grading process, then picking one or two, depending on what you want to do, applicants to bring to council for a final selection, those type of things.
Sounds like, be more like a year or more just to do that.
Certainly with the various items that we have on our plate with the city, as you are all aware of, it would certainly take some time.
There appears to be no other questions from the council. We have some public speakers. Our first public speaker tonight will be Paul Castillo, followed by Paul Burns. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. Paul Castillo, Ramon Law Group. I represent a company by the name of Ventura Seed Company. They are a hemp producer looking to operate a facility here within Thousand Oaks. So if I could, just some clarifying statements here on the legality of hemp. We got a misstatement in the update regarding hemp being a Schedule V drug. That's actually incorrect. Hemp is an agricultural commodity. So as part of the supplemental record, I submitted a memorandum of legality on hemp issued by the USDA, essentially saying hemp is no longer subject to the Controlled Substance Act. So it is not a drug under any schedule. It is akin to, you know, corn or strawberries at this point. So recently, we, my client Ventura Seed Company, attempted to initiate a hemp processing facility, obviously here within the city, and there was some confusion from the City Attorney's Office and the Business Development Office regarding potential compliance for this operation. And there is currently nothing within the municipal code to, I guess, restrict this type of activity. So we are just seeking clarification this evening, hopefully some sort of, I guess, acknowledgement from the City Council, if possible, that there currently are no hemp regulations in place at the city level. Obviously, this type of processing is subject to, you know, building code requirements and fire code requirements, things of that nature, but nothing hemp-specific. I'm more than happy to work with the council, City Attorney's Office, with respect to clarifying some of these current regulations, both at the federal and state level regarding hemp. But again, it is an agricultural commodity akin to, you know, corn and berries. So if we were trying to open a strawberry processing facility, I don't think we would get the same pushback. So just hoping that, you know, we can clear up any misunderstandings regarding the two plants and hopefully allow my client to proceed.
Thank you very much. Paul Burns, followed by David McFarland. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor McCoy, Councilmembers, and city staff. As you know, I'm Paul Burns, 2012, Simms Berry Court, Thousand Oaks, since 1965. I'm here because I'm partner number two. We were the runner-up in July 2018, and now 14 months later, we're still here, and we're looking for the council to take advantage of, I believe it's prop number four in front of you. We've been waiting patiently to get the second permit, and the opportunity has finally arisen for the council to award a second permit. And we still have our approved facility. We've held on to it. We're ready to move forward and build a state-of-the-art facility for the city and the community. And I don't know what else I can say, except that we're here to ask for your support. We promise you a first-class facility, and we will open within a reasonable period of time. We already have state licenses for other operations. We already use the trace and track metric system for reporting to the state. We already have distributorships set up. We have trained staff. We have everything necessary to open. All we need is your permission. So with that, I'll take any questions you may have. My partner Dave is going to come up and talk to you about the safety of a brick and mortar versus delivery, but I'll take any questions if you have any.
Thank you, sir. David McFarland, followed by Chuck Cohen.
Good evening, Mayor McCoy and Councilmembers. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm David McFarland, 42-year resident of the Caneo Valley here in Thousand Oaks. Of course, my partner Paul, we're the runner-up last July. Since that July 10th meeting, a lot has happened. We were able to open our second location up in Lompoc, which we're really proud of that. One thing I would like to talk about is, yeah, the brick and mortar model versus, say, just the delivery service. Brick and mortar, the one thing that stands out when you have a solid brick and mortar is safety. It's just a much safer model. We have onsite security, we have cameras everywhere, the customers are screened and ID'd before they're ever given access into the facility. The inventory and all the cash is locked in a safe room to where it's, you know, super safe. And the most importantly for a state-licensed brick and mortar is the product. Versus delivery services, Chief Hagel has mentioned that in their investigation on delivery services, not one of them had a city license. Well, I would bet that probably at least 80% of them don't have a state license either, which means that they don't have access to state-regulated, state-tested cannabis. So, and that's very dangerous, because I've heard it time and time again, people, you know, customers ordering a delivery, and then to their surprise, after they've given the money and they open the bag, it's something completely different as to what they're expecting. So on a state-regulated delivery or a brick and mortar, it's far better. A brick and mortar has knowledgeable staff. It's a comfortable setting for a customer to come into, and our staff is trained to, you know, teach the patients, as we call them, for their medical condition, about all the different products that are available. And there's, currently, we carry between 200 and 300 different products on our menu board, so it gets quite confusing and quite intimidating for the first-time patient or if you've been in a couple dozen times. So, and products are constantly new, the industry is moving very fast, so we do a good job of making sure we stay up to date on that and keep our customers aware of the best products available for them. Privacy. A brick and mortar provides a privacy factor. Customers sometimes don't want, they don't want to know, they don't want neighbors knowing that they're, you know, accessing cannabis. Having a delivery service, there's, you know, children, we've heard other stories about such things like that.
Time's up.
That's it? Thank you.
That's it.
Got a question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, did you have one, too?
Councilmember, or Mayor Pro Tem Adam, go ahead.
Okay. David, so at a medicinal marijuana facility, do the customers have to show that marijuana card issued by a doctor?
Yeah, it's a written recommendation from a doctor.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, it's a recommendation, yes.
Okay.
They have to have a current recommendation and a valid ID.
Okay.
And then they're scanned into our POS system. We verify that the doctor is in good standings with the state and that the recommendation is not expired.
Okay, just had to refresh my memory on that. And as far as delivery or illegal delivery, as you heard our police chief say, the cases that he came across were all illegal. Do you find, because with your other facilities that are in fact legal and bricks and mortar, does that tend to discourage illegal delivery?
As a matter of fact, it does. When we opened our Lompoc facility, two of the illegal delivery services in the area who had been there for quite some time actually packed up and left because the customers were very happy to have a brick and mortar facility that they come into. So that was just the feedback I got from the customers. So illegal delivery services kind of look for communities or jurisdictions that don't have brick and mortars. They kind of feed off of that, so they're kind of hoping that it stays that way.
And do you deliver from your other facilities?
We have a delivery service. It's just a convenience for some of our elderly patients that can't, you know, that can't, don't have access to, they don't have transportation to get to us, so it's a convenience that we offer them, yeah.
But it's legal.
Absolutely legal.
There you go.
Yeah, and we pay every penny of tax.
Got it.
Stay put, David, stay put.
Thanks, David.
Councilmember Bill de la Peña.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. I had similar questions, so, but what I would like to know is you're interested in brick and mortar, you've stated that. Are you also... Are you also planning to provide the classic delivery service that we've been talking about tonight? Not just occasional to the elderly patients?
If the option is available and the city allows it, sure, we would offer that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, David.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
My colleagues up here are brave enough to have me make the presentation this evening. And the purpose of it is because Legendary has appeared and has been part of the dialogue so far this evening. So it requires a bit more perspective and understanding of where we think things are, if you indulge me to that extent. So Mayor Robb, council members and most diligent staff. As you know, I represent Legendary Organics, Inc., the city's dispensary permitee. We are here, we came here tonight to listen to staff's cannabis update and your reactions to that, as well as to bring you current on our clients' not always so apparent diligent efforts to open shop since being selected as the city's dispensary permitee. That process included the subsequent negotiation and signing of the city's operations agreement. We are grateful for the candid, open, often arduous working relationship with your staff members and more particularly because of the way this has played out with your Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Heer. We believe the process you direct, you have directed, will raise the bar of professional, healthy, medical cannabis commerce in this city. You can be assured that Legendary will conduct itself in league with your highest expectations and standards for the healthful benefit of our residents. It may be useful to provide a brief overview of Legendary's efforts to get open without getting too deep into chronological details. But if you do have those kinds of questions, we have the right people to respond to them.
You got about 50 seconds, so do your best.
I'm sorry?
You have 50 seconds.
Is that right?
Yep.
I'm done.
No, you have 50. Now you have 40.
He said he's done.
I, well, if I got less than a minute, then I've got a real problem here.
Well, we have questions for you, so just stay put and I'll start. What was the reason for the desire for the change of location that has delayed the opening?
There were, let me respond to that and thank you for the opportunity. We had prepared plans for the original site. They had been plan-checked by the staff. They'd gone through and been essentially ready to be implemented and built out. And then what occurred was that we got news of the potential promulgation of a new set of regulations regarding deliveries. Deliveries presented a specific issue to that location for a couple of reasons, but primarily because the site was not adequate to handle both fixed-site retail sales and counseling and also do deliveries from that location. So it, the plans that had been prepared professionally and at a significant cost would have to have been redesigned at that point. In addition, there was an issue having to do with the common area, the common area laws and the concern that under the federal law, there was a, that cannabis was still a Class I drug. So the combination of those two things caused us to make contact with your staff and to recognize that we needed further direction from the staff as well as from the council. In essence, both the city and Legendary and the others in the industry were victims or innocent victims of this change of regulation brought on by the Bureau of Cannabis Control in Sacramento. And that is the essential impediment to have moved forward. That set in motion a series of meetings and a timeframe that ran from November of last year to your meeting in May this year when you adopted modifications to the cannabis ordinance of the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code. So in essence, we were put into limbo, at least for that period of time, until we knew what direction the council would go, having now seen that the state was moving to deliveries.
Mayor Protam Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so the new location that you're looking at, do you feel that it fits the criteria that was laid out in the original process, the kind of things that we were looking for for a medicinal marijuana facility location?
The, take it back one step and then go forward. When it became clear that there was going to be a problem with the ability to adapt to the original site for deliveries, the, my clients immediately engaged professionals, as well as their own efforts, in looking for a location that would still qualify under the very strict restraints of the city's qualifying requirements. And so your requirements really limit the opportunities to find an appropriate location within the city. The first location that they came upon, excuse me, was a location not too far from Corporate Center Drive, but in a location that was antithetical to the concerns of the nearest neighbor. They pursued that for a period of time, thinking that that would be a, they knew that it met the city's qualifications. And they were dealing with a non-receptor property owner that was concerned. And in further conversations with the city, we came to the conclusion that we would not go forward with that location. Then there was a period of continuing to look for another location. Approximately a month ago, 1339 Lawrence Drive opened up. And it actually has, from a standpoint of adaptability for deliveries and actually for convenience of the residents, because it's a little closer to the freeway, they were able to enter into, and actually to show their good faith that they have always intended to open and operate a cannabis fixed location. They've actually entered into a lease, have paid advance rent, and knowing full well at that point that they hadn't gotten the formal or official approval from your council, because that's been very clear, that that is a policy issue that we all recognize is in your hands. So this new location is about two, essentially two blocks from Corporate Center Drive and actually is an improvement over that site as a functional facility for this purpose.
So you had it locked down? You've already paid a fee and hold the property? So you must be fairly confident that it'll fit the criteria that we're looking for?
Yes, and we believe that when we announced that to staff, I don't know who may have done this, but I have heard that staff actually sent some folks out, which was very efficient, and have vetted that site and believe that, at least tentatively, it meets the city's criteria.
Okay, and if we were to, as you know, when we first broached, when the issue was first broached to us years or so ago, we did not allow delivery here in the city. We're going to reconsider that tonight. But the piece that you have now on Lawrence would be amenable to delivery.
Yes, and that's a key consideration as to comparing this Lawrence Drive site to the site that is currently the stated location under the permit.
Okay. Just one other question. If the council would go this route and approve this location change, do you have a timeframe that you think you would be able to actually open the facility?
We believe that short of the necessity, first, we have to have that site vetted and accepted in the city.
Yes.
Once you do accept that, just as you did with the permit and an operating, operations agreement is approved, we can then go to the state and get that permit. And from the standpoint of being able to, and the intent of Legendary to go to work in preparing the necessary plans for the tenant improvements, that facility could be open before the end of the year. The only question that we have no control over at this moment is how fast we can get state action on it as well. And of course, obviously, we need your approval before we can go forward.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cohen.
Council member Bill de La Peña?
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. Good evening, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. The original location 14 months ago did not allow for deliveries. And we have the runner-up who, runner-up being Leaf, who has had brick-and-mortar medical dispensaries with no deliveries running fine. Why, are you saying that you would have stayed in that location had it not been for the change in deliveries?
The answer is, at one point, there was a concern about the fact that there is, there are multiple owners of common ownership where the facility was functioning with regard to the intake of inventory and so on. That created a technical, legal issue that was of great concern to our applicant because they did not want to put other users in that area at risk with respect to the federal government. They were prepared, however, at that point to accept the fact that they would self-insure or self-finance in the event that those issues arose. In the meantime, the delivery issue arose. And so they, the combination of what I just described, as well as the fact that they were now in a position that they would have to go back and revamp, and they didn't think that they had sufficient space within that facility, within that permitted area to do both fixed-location, retail sales and counseling, as well as deliveries coming off of that site. So it was the combination of those two things that put them in a position that they had to look for another location. Had it not been for deliveries, they probably would have gone ahead with that site and would have been opened many months ago.
I'm sorry to hear that that didn't happen, to be honest. What?
Well, you folks are in the same boat that we are. The state acted preemptively and we have no, you chose not to litigate, which is fine. And we chose likewise not to do so.
So tonight, we have, we hear the same line, we will be open by the end of the year. We heard that 14 months ago. So what will, what would help us truly believe that that is the case? That you are actually able to do what you're saying you are going to be doing?
Well, we're trustworthy for one thing, council member. These people are local business people. I, we are not telling you a false story. We have not slept on that permit. They've continued to try to find a way to get to a location and undertake the proper steps to get open as soon as possible. It is not in their best interest to allow this thing to lag. They're in this business to make a profit, just as they want to make sure that the city receives tax funds as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mayor McCoy.
Thank you, council member. Thank you, Chuck. That's it.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Next speaker will be Patrick Spillane.
Good evening, Your Honor, council members. I'm Patrick Spillane of Legendary Organics. Chuck is our counsel. His presentation was not limited to the only voice to express and answer any questions that you may have about our operation. I think just to be very clear, 2712, our approved location, is a common-interest industrial subdivision. Our approved location was a freestanding building within that project. However, when the state changed the regulations or proposed the regulations to be changed on October 24th, we recognized that one or two things couldn't really happen. We had a legal opinion that our patients conducting their care needs, shall we say, at Legendary were doing so inside a freestanding building. And when they left our premises with their products, they were legal in the parking lot. However, we as a business owner could not conduct federally illegal Schedule I activities in the common areas of a project that was co-owned by 23 other folks. It would subject our co-owners to significant legal and banking risks. And a large portion of that project was actually a condo subdivision, so it was a single building. And so those folks had many SBA and VA loans that they used to acquire those facilities. And so we as a business, we're not going to put our co-owners into any sort of legal jeopardy. We actually contacted Assistant Attorney Patrick Heer on the Monday after the state permanent regs came out, the revised, that included what we call dynamic delivery. We met on November 1st. So we have been, I think, in constant contact with city staff, letting them know of these issues. We also, as Chuck mentioned, did secure another facility. And essentially, from when the state's regulations were proposed to be changed on October 24th until they took effect unchanged on January 16th, and then it took the city time to basically then incorporate those changes in its cannabis ordinance, which didn't happen until June 11th. We met with city manager Drew Powers on June 13th, two days after that took effect, to discuss our second location. And because of the sensitivities of a very significant corporate occupant that did not want this business right off their front door, we declined, after consultation with Drew, to actually move forward with presenting that formally to the council. We offered at that time to actually turn back our permit on June 13th. However, in consultation with Drew, basically, we said, well, are you willing to continue to look? Yes, we are. And we did find this third location. And that is what we have now submitted to you and city staff to process a transfer location. So we have been working diligently and tirelessly to make this thing happen in the face of a regulatory environment that we cannot go against.
Well, your time's up, so let's see if there's any questions for you from the council. Thank you for that insight.
Happy.
Counsel? Council member Bill de La Peña? Councilmember Builda La Peña?
Thank you, Mayor McCoy. Mr. Spillane, I will ask you the same question I asked your legal counsel. With this new proposed location, do you find the same restrictions as you did, or do or did with your original location?
No, we do not have the same restrictions. That is why we are in this facility. So we are able to conduct the same brick-and-mortar operation, essentially, as we proposed last year. It has the same Fort Knox improvements that Chief Hegel liked. We have continued to have interior money handling and product delivery operations within the physical facility. And actually, this allows us to incorporate additional Sally Port gates in the back to actually create additional security measures that further protect the facility and those around it. So we believe that we will be delivering the same quality that we proposed a year ago and still be able to handle changes in the state regs as they may come about.
The runner-up, Leaf, said that they would open up a brick-and-mortar place with or without deliveries. Would you do the same?
Well, those regulations have now changed, so I think that's sort of an academic question. The answer was no, we were not prepared to do so, essentially because of the cost of building out a very extensive and very expensive facility that really had no use beyond a cannabis dispensary. I mean, once we left that facility, you had got a million dollars worth of improvements.
So if tonight the city decided we're not allowing deliveries, you would not go forward with your proposal?
Well, my understanding is that deliveries are allowed by law to all dispensaries. So maybe there's a question to have with Patrick Heyer, but my understanding is that the BCC's regulations enable all licensed dispensaries to conduct delivery operations.
But we do have a runner-up who says that they will open up even without deliveries. And I'm asking you the same question. Would you do the same?
Well, we believe to best serve the residents of Thousand Oaks and Caneo Valley that actually, delivery is a convenience. As was mentioned, you know, for those customers, patients, who don't have the physical ability to reach the store, it does provide a convenience. We do believe that bricks and mortar is really critical for helping to educate patients on the well-being and the products that best meet their needs specifically, as well as to educate and train them on how to successfully utilize those products, because there's lots of different ways that people can go astray if they're not trained, as well as giving them remedies for how they may mitigate an issue if they do take too much of an edible or have other bad experiences. We do believe that essentially, once folks get comfortable with a certain regime that they like to use, that deliveries will probably be more of an option for them, just because Thousand Oaks is a very spread-out community. And so, to save 30 minutes going to Newbury Park, they might actually then elect to use a delivery for their products.
I assume that the answer is no.
I'm sorry, I thought I made that clear. Yeah, no, we believe that deliveries, it's not something that we wanted, quite frankly, but we do believe that deliveries now can be made by other folks. So if the city didn't want its licensee to make deliveries, then you're essentially allowing other folks in other communities to business.
The reason I'm asking is because this is all in court. This will be litigated, this will be decided by a judge.
Understood.
And it may be a completely different outcome, and deliveries may be banned altogether in a year or two. This is why I'm asking.
Oh, I understand, okay. Well, if that's the case, then that becomes the law of the land, and we, of course, accept that. You know, we were having to respond to the very specific changes in the state regulations, and we basically had two choices. We would have had to completely redesign our facility in order to accommodate one or two or three delivery vehicles, and we actually shared those plans with staff. So we would have had to come back to the city to approve a change of our floor plan and security plan and safety plan to accommodate a couple of delivery vehicles. Or the alternative, which most folks would do, would be in a normal business that didn't have common ownership of the parking facilities, they would just simply do their delivery activities in parking common areas. Unfortunately for us, because of the specific legal nature of that project, that was not acceptable. And so therefore, we had one of two choices. You know, gut the bricks-and-mortar operation that we felt was really critical, or to do illegal activities, and we were not type of operator to do illegal activities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That'll do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our last speaker will be Joe Kyle.
Good evening.
Hello, Mayor McCoy, Mayor Pro Tem Adam, city council members and city staff. It's been almost three years now, been on this road. To think that we'd be here is kind of, still without a dispensary open is kind of concerning. I'll start with the staff report, page four, bottom. I'll go quickly because of the time. The permit issued to Legendary Organics expires on December 31, 2019. Per Thousand Oaks Municipal Code, Section 59, or 5-29, period 12, a cannabis business must be in continuous operation for four months prior to the renewal application. Since there has been no state license issued and the business is not currently in operations, it is not likely that the permit will be eligible for renewal. Legendary Organics has formally requested a change in location. However, the executed operations agreement is specific to the address for which it was approved. Moreover, the ability to request a change in location under the code presumes that the business has operated at the original location. Additionally, even if an application to change location is appropriate in this case, TOMC Section 5-29, period 19, requires a cannabis business to undergo the same review process as a new applicant, but with a focus on location, which I'm pretty sure the first time, a focus on location was, I believe, 30 points of the 100. This review includes city council approval. Here I have a snapshot, a list that I put together of 24 deliveries from Weed Maps that are advertising on Weed Maps. 20 out of the 24 have no license stated on their advertisement. Three out of the four have a license that, when looked up at the state BCC website at the bottom of this list, the license has expired or no results found. And one has the active license, which expires 5/22/2020. Please remember what percentage of the community voted for delivery in the 2017 Community Attitude Survey, which I believe was around 64 to 65 percent. I request that the city vote for number one, or four, and number six from the staff report. Oxnard is looking at permitting different uses in separate timelines. A storefront must be an option for patients because one must be able to view and inspect the medicine that they are buying. Deliveries are usually a best option after one visits the brick-and-mortar building. I request the council remove the 24-hour appointment requirement, allow the dispensary based within the city to deliver. Local ordinances must be very specific in allowing delivery within the city from businesses based within the city. And the ordinance this city has would not allow a permanent dispensary within the city to get, sorry, to conduct deliveries within the city. The state legislation that it is allows for a permanent base of operation based within another city to deliver to any jurisdiction within the state of California because of free commerce. You cannot stop free commerce. But if the entity based within this city does not thoroughly state within this city's ordinances that not only
You gotta wrap it up.
Not only storefront dispensary, but a delivery service is permitted within that entity, then that entity could conduct deliveries within this city. Otherwise, they are subject to other entities coming into that city.
Thank you, Mr. Kyle. Before council discussion, I would ask that the staff follow up, especially with what Mr. Kyle just shared.
Thank you. First point, we heard a comment regarding industrial hemp. Staff is not confused about the issue. It is an ever-changing matter before both federal and state. There is currently two significant state legislation enactments pending right now. Department of Agriculture, the gentleman is correct, has taken over the issue for industrial hemp in a federal level. Would that be, the focus tonight is on cannabis. I would be happy to meet with any person who wants to meet about industrial hemp in our city and discuss it with them. So be happy to have them meet with me and staff to discuss these issues. Again, it's ever-changing. You heard a couple of comments about deliveries. We have an operations agreement, and our ordinance does state no deliveries are permitted. Yes, we have this issue with state, the state BBC making, BCC making comments about deliveries and making the new legislation. But our operations agreement, which is controlling on this matter, does not permit deliveries. The issue's got to be, of course, in fairness to any operator that operates out of Thousand Oaks, is whether or not you want to consider that as an option for them to allow deliveries in fairness, because we now, right now, have to deal with deliveries from outside sources. But the operations agreement that we would negotiate is what we would call controlling. And so again, the option for deliveries is something that we put in there as a discussion point, because we understand now we can go statewide deliveries.
I just have one more comment.
Let's go with you.
Yeah, just, I have one quick follow-up. Representatives from Legendary Organics made comment. We did sit down in June. The comment was made that they offered to return the license and that I had encouraged them to look for another location. I think that that is a bit misconstrued in that the discussion was focused on where they were going to turn next. I encouraged them to make the business decision that they needed to make, and that we would be coming to city council for direction on the 10th, because these are all questions in the city council's purview.
Just one final comment also. Just want to advise council that any timelines that council's interested with respect to construction and opening for business has to be based on having, obviously, an application that's been processed and approved, a fully executed operations agreement, the issuance of the business permit, issuance of the state license. There's also the tenant improvement. So, you know, with respect to the ability to open by the end of the year, I'm not sure that that is a realistic, thank you, a realistic timeline, because there is a lot that would need to be done.
Ms. Noonan, can you elaborate on Mr. Kyle's comment about the permit expiring?
Yes, and actually, I'm going to have Mr. Heyer. He's kind of our cannabis expert in the department, but
So there is a section in our code that does state that for the business permit, so the operations agreement that we have with Legendary is for five years, but the business permit to operate is an annual permit. This annual permit that was given to Legendary expires on December 31, 2019. So the issue becomes, depending on what happens tonight, is that for a business permit to be reenacted and given another, approved again, they actually have, one of the requirements is that you actually have to be in operation for the previous four months. And so, by the calendar, that can't happen at this point.
So what that means is that if there's a desire by the council to either give direction with staff to either do option number two, hold on, no, no, no. Was it, which one is it?
Tracy, I think you mean three and five.
Three and five. Under either circumstance, it's not a change of location, it's actually a new application that would be required, because the permit cannot be reissued based on its failure to be open at least four months continuously before the expiration of the permit year.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor? Council discussion, we will begin with Councilmember Jones.
Well, I'd like to begin with a question and then discussion. My question to whomever on staff would like to answer it, if we were to choose number five of the options, and I know we're not making a final decision tonight, we're just giving direction, but what would be the direction that would be given if we choose number five?
So what the direction would be is, if you were to choose number five, you would direct staff to do a number of things. One of them would be to amend our ordinance, because our current ordinance allows only one medical dispensary. So we would need to amend our ordinance to allow for two medical dispensaries. The second thing we need to do is, we need to go out and discuss, if you were to pick number five, do you want to have any of the restrictions that are in our ordinance that you might think should be changed? One of them, for example, was the requirement for a 24-hour appointment. Another one was delivery. Another one was about the timing for the appointments and when they come in. Those are things that we could look at for you and present those to you if you wanted to amend the ordinance when we do it for the medical facility, since we have to amend it for two. The other thing we would do is direct us to negotiate operations agreements with both Legendary and Leaf. And that's an agreement that we created to talk about the use at that location, the specific location. Since it would be a new location for Legendary, we would have to do it for that new location because it's very specific to that. The other item we'd have to do for Legendary is to look at the location and vet that location like we did with the other one, to ensure that this meets all the requirements for safety, public safety, and for the distance and stuff like that. Again, preliminary, we think it does.
Do you have any idea what time, length of time we're talking about to accomplish all of that?
Well, as Ms. Noonan stated, going to the end of the year is, it would be tricky just to give a date, frankly. There are a lot of factors that go into the negotiation, vetting the location, things of that nature. But I would say we would try to do our best to get it as soon as possible back to you. I think the amendment to the ordinance could be done sooner, but the other issues with the negotiation and the vetting of the location would take some time.
Thank you. I'd like to discuss now, if I may.
Okay.
I want to make sure I'm doing this in the right order. It occurs to me that, first of all, I've talked to various applicants and people who seem to know this substance, that there's no substantial difference between medical marijuana and recreational, or are we using the word cannabis? Therefore, if you want to alleviate a medical problem or simply recreate, you could use either product, if my assumption is correct. And because of state law, as has been mentioned, any resident can now pick up the phone and receive recreational cannabis simply by phoning. So a phone call could cause to be delivered cannabis which could be used either for, to alleviate a medical problem or simply to recreate. I wasn't on the council when this decision was made a little over a year ago, but it seems to me that perhaps the reason that the council approved only a single permit instead of more than one was that at that time, there was no ability to simply phone and get marijuana. And I think the council may have been hesitant to have a number of places or more than one because those, you know, to provide, by one would provide enough relief for those that really were in pain and needed medical marijuana. But the council may have been wary of making it too readily available, so it might have gotten into the wrong hands. I'm just speculating. I don't know what the council's reasons were at that time. It seems to me, as a matter of fairness, that both Legendary and Leaf made valid presentations. I think they're both honorable groups. I believe they would do their best to have either brick-and-mortar or the combination of brick-and-mortar and delivery, and that if we went into this process, that they could both come up with appropriate facilities. So I think, as a matter of fairness, based on the fact that we cannot, if one of the reasons a year ago was to not make it too widespread in Thousand Oaks, but since we cannot achieve that anymore with immediate delivery just by phoning, I think as a matter of fairness, that we should make it available, this development, to both Legendary and Leaf. So if you want a motion, I would move number five right now.
Thank you, councilmember. Mayor Pro Tem Adam?
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I think we have two sets of issues in front of us here. As Councilmember Jones was talking about, we have to decide, do we still want a medical marijuana facility in Thousand Oaks? And if we do, do we want Leaf or Legendary or both? First set of issues. The second set of issues is the new directions that we might give staff as far as delivery, as far as operating hours, as far as the as far as operating hours, as far as the business of appointments. So, let's talk about the first set of issues first. You know, starting a whole new process at this point seems to me to be ill-advised. The process that we went through was extremely stringent, and we came up with two very solid applicants, I think. To eliminate Legendary and depend strictly on delivery, very problematic, as you could tell from Chief Hagel, most of the delivery happening is illegal here in Thousand Oaks. And we don't get any taxes on it. We can't control it, and it's something that I just don't think is going to work. To open a new application process for Legendary, X is out Leaf, to allow Leaf to operate, X is out Legendary, as Councilmember Jones says, I don't think it's fair to either one to eliminate one or the other. So, to me, option five makes the most sense. I think there's room for two dispensaries here in the city. I think there's probably room for even more two dispensaries based on our population. In my mind, Legendary, proceed on with a new location. We'll vet it. We'll put them through the process. Hopefully, it'll work and they can open. And I certainly don't want to have Leaf wait any longer than they already have. They have good experience in this business. I think they're ready to go. And I think the best solution of those options is to allow both dispensaries to go forward. So, if you have a motion on the floor, I guess I would support it.
I still have questions.
Thank you, Mayor Protam. Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Thank you. I have questions for staff, actually. So, the, because of the pending litigation regarding deliveries, and one option was to wait for the outcome of the lawsuits against BCC. Mr. Heher, how long could that take? A year or two or three? How long?
Right, so it's difficult to estimate that. I did speak to the attorneys for the cities and the county that are suing the BCC, just to get an idea of where they were. And I also pulled up the file on the Fresno County Superior Court to look at the status of the case. There have been no dispositive motions, and by dispositive motion, I mean that there's been no motion that would, if it was granted, would end the case one way or another, like a motion for summary judgment will be the example. So, there's nothing there. In fact, right now, they're in the middle of discovery, and according to the court, there is a request for delay due to a 31,000-page document that the state has regarding their decision to make deliveries statewide. So, with that, my expectation would be that it would be at least until the late 2020 where any decision in the trial court would be made. Let me, with a caveat, though, that I would suspect that due to the nature and impact of this decision, one side or another would probably appeal that decision. So, again, right now, the law is, deliveries are permitted statewide. I do not see in the foreseeable future, at least through next year, that changing.
Thank you, Mr. Heher. Chief Hagel, what was the number of illegal deliveries that your investigators discovered?
Well, with respect, I'm going to hold it right now, because tomorrow, we're going to be serving papers to these companies. So, they're going to get a wake-up call this week. We're going to be taking some legal action against the actual delivery companies. So, I'm going to come back with those details, but what I wanted to emphasize was that every single, we just ordered up the marijuana, as Joe mentioned, right off of Weed Maps, and every single one that we ordered up was an illegal delivery without city business license. So, we'll be, they're going to be hearing from us.
Thank you, Chief Hagel.
Just to add on to that, in addition, as Mr. Tato mentioned in the presentation, it's important for the public to know as well, the city's been quite proactive since the council's action in putting all of these companies on notice about our regulatory framework. So, they've received not one, but two direct mailings with a copy of our business license application and our tax remittance form and policy associated with it. So, our enforcement activities are geared at when that, when the rate of adoption did not come back in a manner that we felt was appropriate, that's when enforcement activities began. And as Chief Hagel mentioned, we intend to continue enforcing those regulations.
Great, thank you. And one more question from Mr. Heher. If we went with option number five, which is allowing two medical dispensaries, would Leaf then be having a leg up on this since they already have a state license? And would they be the one to open up sooner?
Well, first of all, we have to negotiate...
After the changing of the ordinance and all that?
Sure, but we also have to negotiate an operations agreement, which I can't predict how long that will take. The second thing is, I do not think they could have a state license for this city yet, because they don't have a license, a permit from our city yet. So, I'm not saying that wouldn't happen in a short time period, but certainly, they could move forward probably quicker, because their location's already been pre-approved as far as the last year's evaluation. So, that is something that might be a little bit quicker for them in that aspect, but I don't see too much of a difference of time between either one of them.
Okay, and let's see. How long might it take, then, to change our ordinance, to amend our ordinance?
So, we need to have that discussion to ensure we're trying to craft an ordinance that, with the changes that you might want tonight with direction, we need to have a first reading, then a second reading, and then 31 days after the second reading, whenever that is, it would be adopted.
Okay. I also wanted to...
So, I'm thinking two to three months for a minimum.
Okay.
I think it's also fair to state, and Tracy, you can chime in as well, that we could move concurrently based on council's direction as it relates to negotiating of operating agreements. So, it's not, they don't have to happen in a sequential fashion.
They don't have to, yeah, they don't have to happen sequentially. We could bring operations agreements and changes to ordinance at the same time, and just the effective date for the operations agreement wouldn't occur until the actual effective date of the ordinance.
I see, okay. I also wanted to make clear that I would not be in any favor of considering permitting other types of cannabis-related commercial businesses, any of the other options on there other than option number five. Well, yeah, because it, oh, and then, of course, eliminating the restrictive hours, the 24-hour notice, in my opinion, doesn't make any sense anymore with all the changes going on and with the regulations regarding hemp changing constantly. I think we need to hold off on that and just focus on cannabis first.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Engler?
Thank you, Mayor. As with Councilmember Jones, I was not on the council when this was done. However, I did spend some time and sat through the recording of the deliberations that the council did during that time. And the council did some very, very good deliberation on it, listened to testimony by both applicants. In my opinion, both applicants were equally qualified. And the thing I took away from listening to everybody on the dais that day was that we full, that the council fully anticipated and expected that within a year or so, there would be a need or a opportunity for another cannabis dispensary within town. Given that, I think with equally qualified applicants and the anticipation a year ago that we would probably go with two, which just so happens to be fairly geographically distributed throughout the town, I see no reason to not support number five. Notwithstanding that the one applicant did have a year to perform, but for various reasons was unable to, I think that at this point, they'll be able to move forward. I trust that they will be able to come to an agreement with the staff to be able to do so. As far as the secondary issues of delivery and those types of secondary issues, I think we have to recognize that the regulatory ground has shifted under us all. Deliveries are now allowed, and it makes no sense anymore, and I agree with Councilmember Bill de la Peña, that it makes no business sense anymore to require a 24-hour wait period and that sort of thing. So, I would encourage staff to look at some of the types of things that we did put on our last effort and remove those that no longer make sense.
Thank you, Councilmember. Originally, I voted for Leaf dispensary, and we'd have one currently if they had one, but I have no opposition to Legendary, so I'm in favor of option five. Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Just very quickly, I would also direct, if my colleagues concur, to eliminate the 24 hours in advance, the operating hours, not sure whether we want to stick to 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. There may be some flexibility in there and then allow for delivery services, since it is allowed by law, but state law.
Councilmember, or Mayor Protam?
So, are we going to tack that on to this motion that Councilmember Jones made?
Yeah, if I might suggest, just for clarity's sake, and I would suggest two actions, the first being direction and the second being parameters.
I agree.
It would just be clear.
So, let's vote on the first motion from Councilmember Jones.
Councilmember Jones' motion. Madam Clerk, will you prepare the vote, please?
That motion carries 5-0.
Mayor Protam, Adam, would you like to make the second?
Well, I just reiterate with Councilmember Bill de la Peña, that we erred on the side of caution when we started out with this thing, but things have changed. I think we should eliminate the 24-hour waiting period. It doesn't make any sense at this point, especially since deliveries are allowed, and it's better for the patients. I mean, they need to get access to this. We need to allow delivery, because now we're going to have two dispensaries with legal delivery that we can tax and monitor. And as the gentleman's there said, legal delivery and bricks and mortars can deter illegal delivery. So, that could actually be a plus there. And finally, as far as the hours go, I believe we voted to go from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Claudia, how would you feel if we expanded that a little bit to maybe like from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.?
Yeah, I think we need to expand that. I mean, your CVS Pharmacy or Rite Aid or whatever, they're open, you know, until midnight. There's one 24-hour in this town, so probably, since this is medicinal, probably, I wouldn't go past nine o'clock, though.
I'm thinking 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Does that sound about right?
That would be a recommendation.
Okay. Okay, so we got the hours, we got delivery, and we've got the appointments that we're going to address.
And you have two dispensaries now.
And we have two dispensaries. Well, that was the first motion. The second motion...
Exactly, well, you're modifying the municipal code. Before we close it out, I just want to make sure from staff that there's no other direction we need.
I think the biggest one, just for clarification, is there is an option to discuss the idea of doing recreational and additional medicine to medicinal. I didn't hear any great comments about it, just, we had to put it out there, just as it is a possibility. To be clear, that you do not want to be changed to...
Not sure we're ready for that yet.
Okay. So, we do have 24-hour appointment, eliminate that.
Yes.
Allow deliveries for both facilities.
Yes.
No recreational, and the operation hours from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Sound good?
Sounds good to me.
Mr. Mayor...
Councilmember Engler?
Just one, if I may, real quick, Councilmember Engler, just because we were on the topic of deliveries, and it is an important note, because Assistant City Attorney Heher is going to be negotiating the operations agreement. The parameters for negotiating the operations agreement will be different now that deliveries are an aspect. Deliveries result in traffic flow and patterns, parking of vehicles, a lot of components that weren't necessarily contemplated in the original manner. So, I'm just, first of all, making council aware of that, but secondly, just making sure you know that as, from a negotiation standpoint, he's going to be having conversations with that and likely engaging Public Works and planning staff in those discussions, and so that will be part of his purview.
That would be to be expected.
Councilmember Engler?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick, a quick comment from Chief Hagel. As the hours expand, especially into the night hours, with this type of business with, currently, we'll see what happens in the future, but currently in a cash-type of situation, is there a magic hour that we need to worry about? Is nine o'clock okay? Is eight o'clock better? I'm just thinking for the safety of both the people being delivered to and the people delivering.
I think that the new proposed hours fall perfect within our perimeters for our patrol operations. So, that'll fold in nicely with our patrol operations, shift change, deployment levels. So, I don't have a philosophical problem with those hours.
Thank you.
Okay. No, Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Oh, sorry.
Delivery hours, should they be the same as the store hours?
My recommendation would be absolutely.
Okay, then, not 24-hour deliveries or anything like that, so.
Again, I will say that the state doesn't have that restriction, but I think for our particular purposes, for these two facilities, that makes sense.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion would be to eliminate the need for appointments, extend the hours from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., which would mean visitation to the facility and delivery, and to allow delivery from the two facilities. The hours, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. Yes, there you have it.
Madam Clerk, please prepare the vote.
The motion carries 5-0.
Thanks for coming. We come to item 12. The city manager and the city attorney have recused themselves, compensation and Sixth Amendment to Employment Agreement for City Attorney. Folks, if you'd exit quietly, please. Tim Giles, take over.
Mayor members of the council, tonight, the council has the opportunity to consider the compensation and the Sixth Amendment to the Employment Agreement with City Attorney Tracy Noonan, that's item 12A, and the compensation in the Third Amendment to the Employment Agreement with City Manager Drew Powers through item 12B. City Council reviews the city attorney's performance on an annual basis. Her performance review for fiscal year 2018-19 was completed by council on August 27th, 2019. For your consideration, a resolution and amendment to the existing city attorney agreement reflecting an increase in annual salary effective July 13th, 2019, from $261,670 to $272,137 is before you. City Council also reviews the city manager's performance on an annual basis, and his performance review for fiscal year 2018-19 was also completed by council on August 27th, 2019. The change to the existing city manager agreement presented for your consideration reflects an increase in annual salary effective July 13th, 2019, from $259,295 to $269,667. Council will need to consider these adjustments separately. I'm available to answer any questions council may have.
Any questions from the council? Councilmember Jones?
I'll move item 12A as stated on the agenda.
We have no public speakers and no more council questions. Who would like to make a motion? You have a motion with any other questions, I guess? We're good? a motion? You have a motion? Any other questions, I guess? We're good. Madam Clerk?
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That takes us to 12B, Compensation and Third Amendment to Employment Agreement for City Manager. That's the same, we voted on both of them?
I'll make a similar motion that we approve 12B as stated in the agenda.
No questions? Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Builda La Peña?
I don't really have any questions. But normally, when we go through this employment evaluation and then renewing the contract, we do explain why we feel that the city attorney and city manager should receive a raise.
Would you like me to do that, or would you like to do it? Or would you like us all to do it?
I think, given that we've had the year from hell, I think it is very appropriate.
I'm in agreement with you. So please, start it off.
Mr. Mayor, you may start it off.
No, no, no. I'm thankful for you. Do it.
No, I think all of us can chime in. But this, these last few months have been especially difficult for the city of Thousand Oaks, as we all know. And our city manager and our city attorney have led their team and the city with such grace and compassion and effectiveness and just pure commitment during the borderline shooting, as well as the Woolsey Fire and the Hill Fire, that they are being honored and, how shall I say it, they're being honored and respected throughout the state of California and other cities for the way they ran a major emergency, two emergencies on November 8.
Yes.
And that makes them stand out and stand apart from the rest of city managers and city attorneys in California. And I'm forever thankful and grateful to Drew and to Tracy for having done what they did to keep us together and to pull us through our darkest hours. So, and I personally thought that that warranted a raise, and that is why I voted for one.
Councilmember Builda La Peña, I was just going to wait for the vote and then share our thoughts, but I'm glad that you did it ahead of time. I know all of us want to at least express our gratitude to both Tracy and Drew. Nations that, or excuse me, states that have suffered, or cities that have suffered across this nation, have called our city for insights and wisdom as to how to navigate waters that no city should ever face. And the exemplary work of both of those folks have really touched me deeply, and I know this entire council. And it was just very, very easy for all of us to come to the conclusion that they needed to be recognized for that. And so, like you, councilmember, it's easy for me to do this and to vote for this. Would any other councilmembers like to share? Councilmember Engler?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, just having been sort of on-boarded this year as a new councilmember, and having worked for a city for 30 years in my prior employment, I can testify that both the city attorney and the city manager have been excellent in bringing new people on board and getting us up to speed quickly with the intricacies of this city. One thing that I noticed, especially with our city manager, Powers, is that the amount of time and effort he puts into keeping city workers engaged in the highest level of service to our citizens. That's something that doesn't happen in some other cities. And I think we are blessed to have him here doing that with us. In terms of our city attorney, she spends untold hours looking at all the smaller and infinitesimally small items that help keep the city out of trouble. And because of that, I think the compensation that we recognized for both those individuals is well, money well spent.
Mayor Protem, Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Great organizations have great teamwork, and Tracy and Drew form an excellent team. And they've surrounded themselves with top drawer people on their team. They're both results-driven, and they really rose to the occasion as we went through some of the most difficult times this city has ever faced, uncharted territory. And the way the two of them work together to handle the situation is being emulated in other cities. They really created a model on how to handle a situation that hopefully no one will ever have to face again. So their performance has been excellent, and the compensation is well-deserved.
Well, that concludes it.
Well-
You got to press a button. Councilmember Jones?
Yeah, I would agree with Councilman Engler. I have not been here for a long time. I mean, seven months, I guess. And I've had some experience with other public entities. And I don't think I've ever seen a public entity, city, park, district, county, that runs any more smoothly than this one does. And what really gets me is the morale. You can tell there's high morale here.
Yeah.
You know, people like to come to work. They like to be around. And it starts at the top, you know? To me, the people at the top set the tone. And I know that all of us on the council try to do our part in that regard. I'm sure we all do. But I feel that we're very fortunate here to have the team that we have. And so I think this is just one small way we can express our gratitude.
Thank you, councilmember. Culture of excellence. Madam Clerk, will you prepare the vote?
The motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Powers, I bought you some time, so you can do any follow-up items?
Thank you, Mayor McCoy, and thank you to the entire council for the kind words. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is two weeks from tonight on the 24th. We currently have a couple of items that are parcolating on special presentations. We'll be recognizing Emergency Preparedness Month with Red Cross. We'll have a report from the Ventura County Civic Alliance, the State of the Region Report, and a proclamation for Mini Mansions 40th Anniversary. On department reports, we will have an update on the sustainability component of the general plan and an elections update from our city clerk. And those are the primary items for that evening. Just want to remind everyone once again, we do have a community workshop for the general plan this Thursday, Los Rubles Greens Golf Course at the Sunset Ballroom. And that will be from 6:00 until 8:30 on Thursday evening. Encourage anyone that has an interest in Thousand Oaks to attend.
Yes, everyone come out for that, please. Ms. Noonan, will you please announce the closed session?
Thank you, Mayor. We have one closed session matter. That's pursuant to Government Code Section 5495, 6.94. It's anticipation of litigation, initiation of litigation.
Well, we adjourn until September 24th. Good night, everybody. God bless.